I call to order this special meeting for discussion and consideration of a student I call to order this special meeting for discussion and consideration of a student for readmission after expulsion, case number 181919. It is August. for readmission after expulsion, case number 181919. It is August. Excuse me, we're waiting for an interpreter. Excuse me, we're waiting for an interpreter.
Testing, testing. Testing, testing.
Just then, how fast I was going. Just then, how fast I was going.
I'm going to be bad at that, too. I've heard that. I'm going to be bad at that, too. I've heard that.
You say that by root anyway. You say that by root anyway. Excuse us, we're going to have a little intermission right here. Excuse us, we're going to have a little intermission right here. We're staying in here for a sec, right? We're staying in here for a sec, right? Or we just stay in here? Or we just stay in here? Okay, so we're not going to, he's not going to do simultaneous interpretation right Okay, so we're not going to, he's not going to do simultaneous interpretation right now. now. We have an alternate plan, given the setup that he's not familiar with. So, I We have an alternate plan, given the setup that he's not familiar with. So, I apologize. apologize.
Thumbs up. Thumbs up.
Third time's a charm. I call to order this special meeting for discussion and consideration Third time's a charm. I call to order this special meeting for discussion and consideration of a student for readmission after expulsion, case 181919. It is August 18, 2020, and of a student for readmission after expulsion, case 181919. It is August 18, 2020, and the the time is 4:08 PM. I will have a roll call, starting on my right. time is 4:08 PM. I will have a roll call, starting on my right.
Jan Michael Greenberg. Jan Michael Greenberg.
Sandy Kravitz. Sandy Kravitz.
Barbara Pearlberg. Barbara Pearlberg.
Patty Beckman. Patty Beckman.
Allison Beckham. All five governing board members are present, and we have a quorum. Allison Beckham. All five governing board members are present, and we have a quorum. Due to the COVID-19 emergency, Center for Disease Control Guidelines and pursuant guidance Due to the COVID-19 emergency, Center for Disease Control Guidelines and pursuant guidance from the Arizona Attorney General, members of the public will not be permitted to attend from the Arizona Attorney General, members of the public will not be permitted to attend in person, but will be able to view the public portions of this meeting online at the usual in person, but will be able to view the public portions of this meeting online at the usual live stream site online at YouTube. All rise, and Vice President Beckman, would you please live stream site online at YouTube. All rise, and Vice President Beckman, would you please say the Pledge of Allegiance? say the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. all.
We don't have any, do we have any changes to the agenda? I move that we approve the We don't have any, do we have any changes to the agenda? I move that we approve the agenda as presented. Do I have a second? agenda as presented. Do I have a second?
Second. Second.
Board Member Kravitz, second. All in favor? Board Member Kravitz, second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? All opposed? Motion passes five to zero. I move that we go into exec, convene an executive session Motion passes five to zero. I move that we go into exec, convene an executive session for three, discussion and consideration of a hearing regarding readmission after expulsion for three, discussion and consideration of a hearing regarding readmission after expulsion for case 181919 pursuant to ARS 38-431.03A2 and ARS 15-843A. The student and parent guardian for case 181919 pursuant to ARS 38-431.03A2 and ARS 15-843A. The student and parent guardian or guardians have been notified in writing in accordance with statutory provision. And or guardians have been notified in writing in accordance with statutory provision. And four, discussion or consultation for legal advice with the attorney or attorneys of the four, discussion or consultation for legal advice with the attorney or attorneys of the public body, specifically regarding item three above pursuant to ARS 38-431.03A3. Do public body, specifically regarding item three above pursuant to ARS 38-431.03A3. Do I have a second? I have a second?
Second. Second.
Board Member Pearlberg, seconds. All in favor? Board Member Pearlberg, seconds. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five to zero. The governing board has convened an executive All opposed? Motion carries five to zero. The governing board has convened an executive session, and we'll be staying in this location. session, and we'll be staying in this location. I call to order this regular meeting of the governing board for Scottsdale Unified School District. It is Tuesday, August 18, 2020, and the time is 5:18 PM. All rise, and Vice President Beckman will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll have a roll call, starting on my right.
Jan Michael Greenberg.
Sandy Kravitz.
Barbara Pearlberg.
Patty Beckman.
And Allison Beckham. All five governing board members are present, and we have a quorum. Due to the COVID-19 emergency, Center for Disease Control Guidelines and pursuant guidance from the Arizona Attorney General, members of the public will not be permitted to attend in person, but will be able to view the public portions of this meeting online at the usual live stream site online at YouTube. Do I have any changes to the agenda? All right. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Board Member Kravitz moves. Do I have a second?
Second.
Board Member Greenberg, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. We will be having public comment available at tonight's meeting. To make public comment, please call 480-484-7873. Public comments will be received via the telephone and will be placed into a queue and heard after the superintendent's comments. We have next a student and staff recognitions and celebrations. Dr. Menzel, would you please present?
Good evening, President Beckham, Vice President Beckman, and members of the governing board. It's always a pleasure to be able to identify individuals to recognize and celebrate. There are actually many, and I'm sure I can't recognize them all, but this evening I would first like to start by acknowledging the work of the entire SUSD team as we begin Week Two. It's been a challenging start to a new year, and I continue to be impressed by the level of commitment, creativity, and caring exhibited by our teachers, administrators, and classified staff. But there is a particular group of people that I would like to call attention to this evening, and call them out by name, and it's the individuals who are responsible for overseeing the five EDL camps that we are responsible for overseeing the five EDL camps that we stood up last Monday. So at Desert Canyon, I would like to thank Kimberly Halloran, Johnny Herrera, and Hayden Campisano at Pueblo, Abby Stobie, and Tess Kovach. At Pima, I'd like to thank Brian Assaba and Brooke Wardell. At Hopi, I would like to thank Dardanay Garcia and Chris Hazelwood. And at Tonalea, we have Shawna Immerman. In addition to those site-level leaders, we have three individuals from our community education team who are overseeing the entire project, Brianna Odell, Elizabeth Soriano, and Caroline Craig. I also need to give a shout-out to Debbie Yvara and Dr. Guerin for the numerous hours they've spent in navigating the logistics of standing up the EDL camps, as well as Amy Goff in Human Resources for her work in identifying classified staff that were willing to take the assignment and provide assistance, in addition to all of our community education staff that are working the camps. Finally, Mary Ann Clancy and a student from the Scottsdale Synchro Team donated 130 masks for the EDL camps. So we are now in Week Two of those camps, and I can provide more information during my superintendent's report, but I want to just express our appreciation for the work of these individuals to make that possible.
Thank you. Then we'll move on. We'll move on to superintendent comments. Dr. Menzel, you report.
All right. We do have a long agenda this evening, so I'm going to try to move quickly through these reports to get to the substance of the agenda. But first, I think there's some interest in what our student enrollment numbers look like after the first week. And as of Friday, we had 22,571 students enrolled in total. We had about 61 students that were absent all five days from EDL, so that's one of the things that we'll be monitoring. In our Enhanced Distance Learning Program, we have 19,229 students, and in Scottsdale Online, 3,342. So as we had mentioned previously, that represents about an 85-15% split between Enhanced Distance Learning and Scottsdale Online. The other important number to watch with respect to student enrollments, we'll see how the numbers shake out as we get into Week Two, but the 40-day ADM count is important because it's tied to the enrollment stabilization funding. As you know, the state has put in some stopgap funding so that we won't get less than 98% of our funding for last year. That 40 ADM count is going to be determinative for how that funding works. It's a complex formula. Thankfully, Shannon Crozier is on top of it, and we'll be able to provide the paperwork that the state needs in order to qualify for the supplemental funding. I want to go back to our EDL camps just to note that in Week One, we never did have full attendance at any one of the sites. We had interest, but many families did not show, and so at the end of last week and over the weekend, phone calls were made to reach out to parents who had expressed an interest but didn't show up. And as of today, at our Desert Canyon Elementary School site, there are 94. Hopi has 82, Pima 74, Pueblo 84, and Tonalea 50. And we've also taken steps so that we can expand the capacity of each site to 140, but we don't and haven't exceeded that demand at this juncture. The learning labs started at Coronado and Seguaro on Monday. You might have seen the Arizona Republic photos with a very nice learning lab at Coronado, but no students. We had a few students that showed up today, and we're reaching out to encourage more to participate, but we had just over 30 who signed up because we asked for preregistration in order to know who might be showing up. So we're in compliance with the state's expectation there and monitoring for additional need as time moves on. The third thing that I think is important to talk briefly about is a topic that we discussed over the summer, and that is, as we return to learn, we need to be engaging in assessment of where our students are in terms of academic performance and conducting a gap analysis. And so our teaching and learning team, and thanks to Dr. Guerin and her team, have put together an assessment strategy beginning today through September 2nd to conduct a gaps analysis, identify where our students are, particularly in English Language Arts and Mathematics, with some supplemental support. And then we will align professional development around what we learned through that process, and we've got our first district professional development day on September 16th, where we'll use that information to inform the professional development for our teachers. So that work is starting this week, and will continue through September 2nd so that we can make informed instructional decisions. The other thing that I think is important to note is the work of the team to identify essential standards. If you think back to the major shift, March 16th, to where we are now, we were not able to cover all of the content during Quarter Four, and to think that we can make up what was not covered and cover all of the curricular content this year is not realistic. So focusing on the essential standards, the most important learning, the things that students will need to build on for future learning, those are the things that the team has identified, so we can emphasize those as part of our process this year. And we do have additional information, and we can answer questions, and if I can't, Dr. Guerin can with respect to that. The fourth thing I'd like to mention just briefly is, we were recipients of a $35,000 grant from the Arizona School Facilities Board for two HVAC units at Copper Ridge. We do apply for funding periodically from the Arizona Schools Facilities Board. We don't always get a lot of money, but it's always appreciated. We do get some to support our facilities' needs in Scottsdale. And the other grant that I wanted to call attention to is a targeted support and improvement grant from the Arizona Department of Education. Again, this is not one that we apply for. It's a formula grant based on AZ Merit scores, and this year, we received $116,334 divided amongst a number of schools, and that funding is primarily used for professional development for staff in order to help raise achievement scores. And then finally, just reflections on Week One. We've heard a lot of feedback. Most of it's been positive. We've heard things from parents saying it exceeded expectations, that it's much better than Quarter Four, that they're pleased with the way the teachers are connecting with their students. But we have had a number of parents also express frustration and concern. Much of that's been at the elementary level. The younger the kid, the more challenging it is, concerns about screen time, some issues with respect to technology working, and if you have a glitch in that, how to get back onto the classroom. So recognizing that things aren't perfect, but that there's appreciation for the way that our teachers were prepared to engage with students, and that in a less-than-optimal environment, that the staff at Scottsdale Unified School District are putting together an educational program designed to meet the needs of our students as we tread these uncharted waters. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, but those were the areas that I wanted to highlight this evening.
Thank you. We are going to be moving on to our public comment area. All public comment will be heard at this time. That means consent, agenda, and non-agenda items. Each public comment is given three minutes, and Vice President Beckman is the manual timekeeper. We will not have a digital timekeeper. So please understand that we might be interrupting you to let you know that your time is almost done, and when your three minutes is up, we will respectfully ask that you stop speaking. Debbie, are you there? We're contacting our IT.
Yes, I'm here, but I believe that Jonathan is going to introduce the callers.
Okay, so Jonathan will be introducing our callers. Thank you, Jonathan. We'll start with caller number one.
It's like a radio talk show. Caller, are you there?
Jonathan, can you hear me?
It may take just a second because it's a new process. I apologize.
No, no problem.
I know that we have four callers in the queue right now, so we're just working on getting the first one live.
All right. I'll go ahead and give you the phone number again. It's 480-484-7873 if anybody would like to call in and be placed in the queue for public comment.
How am I going to do this?
Okay, Jonathan, we heard you now.
Okay, hold on one second.
are in a queue, and we are figuring out the IT. Since we are having some technical difficulty, if we would like to have the information discussion item spoken next while they're working it out, we would need to vote to do that. So I can put a motion on board that we suspend the public comment until after information discussion item due to technical difficulties. So I make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Board Member Kravitz seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes five-zero. All right. We will move on to the information discussion item. Discussion item is, A, revisions adding face-covering masks requirements to Regulation GB-R, Staff Personal Security and Safety, and Exhibit GB-E, Regulation JICA-RB, Student Dress, and Regulation KI-RB, Visitors to School. Dr. Menzel, would you like to start the discussion, or just have our general counsel, Ms. Marshall?
I think Ms. Marshall.
All right. Ms. Marshall?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board, Dr. Menzel. We have several policies for your consideration and discussion this afternoon. I want to point out that these are all regulations and exhibits, which is a little unusual. Typically, the Board approves policies, and we inform you about regulations, so you can ask questions. We can still do that. This is just information discussion tonight. However, it might be your choice to go ahead and make this an action item at the next meeting, just given the importance of this item being masks and face coverings. But it will be totally up to you how you want to proceed. These policies, we have one for staff, one for students, and one for visitors. The Arizona School Boards Association recommended similar language for each of the three. We met as a leadership team cabinet, excuse me. We met as a leadership team to discuss ASBA's recommendations, and we did make some additional recommendations that I'll point out for you tonight. So going in alphabetical order and starting with the staff policy, GB-R, entitled Staff Personal Security and Safety. This is just fixing bullet points to letters. It's easier to refer to. Cloth face coverings, it states, and this is the ASBA language, "All persons, including but not limited to staff, students, vendors, visitors, volunteers, shall wear a cloth face covering while on any district property, etc." As... Oh, wow. Okay. As a leadership team, we recommend adding the next section, which comes straight from the Center for Disease Controls regarding masks with exhalation valves or vents. The CDC recommends against those, just in terms of they haven't been proven to prevent the spread of the disease, and so we thought it was important to add that to our policies. The rest under that, cloth face covering should not be worn by A, B, and C, children under the age of two, anyone who has trouble breathing, and anyone who is unconscious, incapacitated, or otherwise unable to remove the mask without assistance. Again, that is ASBA-recommended language, but also comes straight from the health authorities, local and federal. Under the staff policy, Cabinet is also recommending this language here. When a staff member feels they need a reasonable accommodation under the ADA, we have a process whereby they contact HR, and they have a discussion about what would be a reasonable accommodation to allow that person to do the essential functions of their job. And so we felt it would be helpful to add that to this regulation, and actually, I'll show you next, the exhibit to that is the form that HR currently uses to facilitate that discussion with employees, to ask the right questions about what, you know, what are the job duties, and what could we do to reasonably accommodate the need. And so that is administration's recommendation. The rest is from ASBA, cloth face coverings, the rules about they should fully cover the nose and mouth, fitting snugly, under the chin, et cetera. They also have the language from the state and local health authorities that a cloth face covering doesn't replace the need to continue to be diligent at washing your hands and other ways that you can prevent the spread of the disease. So that is GB-R, the staff regulation that we are recommending. Going with it is that exhibit that I just mentioned, and this is just, like I said, the form that HR currently uses to have a discussion with employees who are looking for reasonable accommodations. So reasonable accommodations are things that we work on with employees all the time. It's not just a COVID thing, and this is not specific to just COVID. It's just what we are required to do and should do in having discussions with employees who need accommodations to be able to do their jobs. I'll move on to the next ones unless anybody wants to stop and talk about the staff recommendations.
Are there any questions from the Board?
No, I believe you can move on. Thank you. So alphabetically, I had to do the alphabet in my head. JICA-RB is a regulation for student dress, so student dress code. We have JICA, the policy for student dress, and we also have a current regulation, JICAR, that addresses student dress. If you add RB, it will be RA and RB. This is ASBA's way of ordering these. So this is a regulation we don't have, and again, it has pretty much the same language that ASBA recommended for all of them. Everyone is expected to wear a mask unless they meet one of the exceptions, which I articulated before. Again, we recommend adding this part about those masks with exhalation valves or vents. Again, we recommend adding this part about those masks with exhalation valves or vents. And other than that, those are the only differences with the one for student dress. Yes?
Board member Greenberg?
Just for the students and visitors, there's no process if they have trouble breathing. Can you explain why that is?
So you're asking about a reasonable accommodation process?
Yes.
Okay. So for students who have some kind of medical condition or have trouble breathing, that is also going to be an individualized discussion with the family. You know, what are the concerns? What can we do to accommodate the student if they can't wear a mask? What are the possible options? We didn't add the process to the regulation. It wasn't part of our discussion. We've definitely talked a lot about it in the special ed context. And because it's so individualized, we didn't think to add it here, but we could certainly make that effort and say something referencing what the processes are.
I don't know how my colleagues feel, but probably add that?
Okay.
Yeah, I would just add it. I mean, if we have a process for it, might as well point it out.
Thank you.
I see other board members shaking their heads, so.
So I'll work with the right people and we'll come up with some language that at least points families to the right place to talk about those kind of accommodations.
Yeah, it doesn't need to be detailed, just what was done with the staff.
I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Okay, so for visitors, we have Policy KI, Visitors to Schools, that talks about who are visitors and the procedures they have to follow. And this is a proposed regulation that we don't have. Again, similar language about wearing masks. Wearing masks is basically the default unless there's an exception. Again, that same language about exhalation valves or vents, the same three categories of exceptions that the health authorities have articulated. And then when we met with Cabinet, we decided to recommend that we add this language. "The district or school will make arrangements with any visitor who is unable to comply with the cloth face covering requirement." Again, the idea was recognizing that there might be visitors who, for whatever reason, can't wear a mask. You know, it'll involve, you know, what is the need to visit and how do we accommodate that? Other than that, the rest of the language is the same.
Board members have questions, comments?
Do you want to have discussion about how we bring it back? Is this something that the board would like to see as an action item? I don't know if Dr. Menzel wanted to make a recommendation about that.
So the important point here is that this is in compliance with Executive Order 2020-51, and it's a part of the conditions that the board identified for a return to learn in person. And so we can proceed with it as a regulation, since that's the way it came from ASBA. But if the board would like to formalize that, we're not opposed to bringing it back at our next meeting. So either option, I think, is acceptable because I think you've identified your expectation for wearing a face mask when we return to learn in person. And so this is codifying that in compliance with the executive order.
Do any board members have a desire to bring this back for an approval from the board? Or can it be just in regulation and exhibits?
And I will bring it back for information because we're going to add some language. We want to make sure that you are okay with that. So we'll at least bring it back for information so you have an opportunity to see the final language. Okay, I will make that plan. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Ms. Marshall. And did you hear from IT?
Yes, I believe we're ready for public comment.
All right, fantastic. Just a reminder that we, each public comment is given three minutes and Vice President Beckman will be the manual timekeeper. Jonathan, are we ready for our first caller?
Thanks for waiting for that. This is Debbie Spaulding. I just wanted to let you know that there's been some technical difficulties. A couple people may have gotten disconnected out of the queue, so please call back. We would love to hear from them.
Okay, in case the public didn't hear that, if you were dropped from the queue, please do call back. It's 480-484-7873, and we'll place you back in the queue. It was inadvertent. All right, Jonathan?
I believe we have Dr. Susan Hughes on the phone.
Thank you. Hello, Susan?
Yes.
Susan, you have three minutes. Yes, you can speak.
Good afternoon, Dr. Menzel, board and cabinet. I'm Dr. Susan Hughes, part of the grassroots group Physicians for Science Equity and Act Activity, otherwise known as PSEA. We've been providing guidance to districts, education leaders across the state to help fill the void due to the lack of state leadership. I know that you receive a number of documents from myself as well as our physician membership. A lot has happened since March 13th, when we closed for in-person instruction. We had at that time 12 cases and no deaths due to COVID. As of today, we have just shy of 200,000 cases and 4,500 deaths. I understand the pressure you are facing in reoccupying the schools for in-person instruction, but I want to remind everyone that we are open for instruction. My now freshman is engaged and animated with her EDL instructors and educators who are working so hard and are successful. I want to applaud all those educators. Our group has sent you as well as superintendent our evidence-based guidelines that come from the CDC, who as well as research. Number one, adequate testing with PCR under 5% positivity. In Arizona, the seven-day moving average right now is 9.2%. I really implore you to look at the John Hoffman or ASU filed sign numbers due to the inconsistency of how the state Department of Health is measuring. Number two, we need adequate and freely available testing for staff and students with rapid return. Number three, tracing. What are the plans right now for tracing in SUSD? And do you have contact tracers as far as a system set up? We need to have consistent downward projection for all of our cases. Yes, we do have that in the state right now, but we are not testing enough. We need adequate PPE supplies for staff. We have submitted everything that I'm telling you, plus a lot more, and all the supporting documents and evidence and hyperlink to the board members, Dr. Menzel and Cabinet. It's important that we look at safety before we look at in-person instruction. Please give our educators parent time and extend the delay and next decision-making point to after first quarter. My concern is, without a proper plan, we will lose teachers like Jill Combs and Steve Street. And more concerning, we will potentially lose students, teachers, and staff members to this dreaded disease. And for you to please follow the science, this is not a popularity poll or political pressure, but follow the science. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Hughes. Jonathan, caller number two.
Give me one second. All right, we have Dr. Alan Graham on the phone line.
All right. Hello, Dr. Graham?
Hi, sorry, I was on mute.
Okay, you have a three-minute time limit.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I'm Dr. Alan Graham. I'm a pediatrician practicing in the valley and parents of pre-2s in the South Dakota Unified School District. I want to second what Dr. Hughes spoke about. Thank you all for working so hard to make things work under these extreme circumstances, these challenges of COVID-19. I know we all want in-person schooling, it's the ideal, but the circumstances are certainly not ideal right now. And I feel for the school boards across the state. You know, there's benchmarks that have been proposed, but they've not been made mandatory. So it's left each school board to determine when and whether to open. And that puts a tremendous amount of pressure on local officials. And I know everybody's familiar with the experience in Georgia and opening up and trying to be normal, but finding that the virus doesn't care if we want to be normal, it can run rampant through the schools. So we need to take into account all the circumstances and the best thing we can do is try to make it as safe as possible while moving towards our goal of ultimately the ideal of in-person learning in a safe way. And the best way to do that is using our science-based guidelines that the CDC and WHO have recommended. It's tough to stick to science guidelines when there's a lot of people clamoring to try to return to normal and we all desperately want that. But as a pediatrician and ICU pediatrician, I see the consequences of what happens when kids do get sick with the coronavirus. I just wanted to share that if we're as careful as possible and follow the benchmarks and the science, we can successfully get back to a reasonable in-person learning. And I think Dr. Susan Hughes spoke of a lot of the metrics that would be very helpful and make our community spread under control to a point where schools can then work. And I just addressed really briefly three myths about the coronavirus. You know, people say that kids don't get the coronavirus. I know our research back from government leaders, and it's clearly not true. Arizona actually has the number-one rate of pediatric cases of COVID-19. In fact, we lead the United States in the American Academy of Pediatrics in the Children Hospital for Foundation data. 12% of all of our cases are pediatric, which is unfortunate. There's also a myth that kids don't get very sick with coronavirus. And unfortunately, many children will do well if they get coronavirus, but thankfully, that's the case. There are about 5% of children, between 1% and 9% of children who get coronavirus will need hospitalization, meaning that they're sick enough to need hospitalization, and one out of three of them will need the ICU. And there's also the new inflammatory disorder, the autoimmune system inflammatory syndrome in children, that is an inflammatory response after the virus is attacked by the immune system and a month or two later.
Dr. Graham? Dr. Graham? Dr. Graham?
Okay, you have a question?
Yes, I need to interrupt you because your three-minute time is up. I want to thank you for giving us your comments. And thank you.
I have six more.
Oh, thank you.
All right, Jonathan, caller number three.
We now have Ryan O'Leary on the line.
Did you say Ryan O'Leary?
Yes.
Oh, thank you.
Larry.
Mr. O'Leary?
Larry.
Mr. O'Leary?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, time starts?
Yes, you may. Thank you.
Because I have three minutes, I'm going to call further back. So in the summer, all parents were given a survey and a choice. And parents who thought it was unsafe and not responsible to return to school, they chose online. But the parents who felt it was safe to return to school, they chose to go back to school. However, both parents were not given that choice because they are all given the option of doing EDL between hours of 8:45 and 2:45, or still online at whatever hours are needed for them. But both options are online and not in-person, and to me, that is not an option. It's just a matter of time preference. The safety of the schools, the schools acting like they should be the sole responsible party for these cases or for COVID, and closing the schools would make the assumption that no one goes anywhere else other than school or home. And parents, teachers, staff, kids, they go all over the place, not just to school. They go to restaurants, they go out to play, they go out to play, they do whatever they can and go to the public school, that's the sole place that people go to, and that is where they need to stay. It's just wrong. Everyone wants a safe, responsible return to school. However, no one on the board, no one in science, no one can say what is safe and responsible. These kids are staying at home, in their room, staring at a computer all day, every day. You cannot show me any evidence that it's safe and responsible. I can give you my own history with my two daughters in the first week, but I can assure you, just looking at the CDC stats, when they released a survey of people, 25% of those who got into ages of 18 and 24 strongly considered suicidal over the last 30 days. And the ramifications of what you're doing mentally to these children by having them sit in their rooms all day, every day, you have zero clue what you're doing and you're using these kids as test subjects. The data for a return to school, these benchmarks, even though they're not requirements, I don't know why they were chosen, but the first public comment was something to do with positivity rate, they were at 9%. The problem with the positivity rate is that it's only a formula based on those that positive, or those who test for COVID. If you don't have a reason to get tested for COVID, you're not going to get tested. Governor Ducey just said last week, "We have it passed and we don't have the demand." So I have asked my friends to go out and get tested. My wife and I, we got tested last week. It took a day to get the response, the results, both negative, but we had three reasons prior to that to get tested, so we weren't included in the denominator of the positivity rate. The positivity rate only is a data that can be manipulated, and to use a data that can be manipulated doesn't make any point. So the...
Mr. O'Leary? Mr. O'Leary? I apologize to interrupt, but I need to interrupt because the three minutes is up. So thank you for your public comments. So we'll move on to caller number four, Jonathan. Is caller number four available?
We have Liz Walter on the line.
Liz Walter?
Yes.
Hello, Ms. Walter. You may speak.
Yes.
You have three minutes to make your comments. And at the point that you hit three minutes, I will be interrupting you. So, thank you. You may speak, Ms. Walter.
Hi, my name's Elizabeth Walter. I'm a mother of three, two on the U of A, go to Keeva Elementary. And I'll probably start crying right now because these last two weeks have been so hard on my girls and on our family. You know, I have a kindergarten partner and a first grader who, just like Mr. Fury said, are now forced to sit in front of a computer screen for almost six hours. And my girls are bright and smart and patient. And it has become this, almost something we're forced to do after thinking that we had a choice and a voice in the life and education of our children. I have been a huge proponent of public education. My husband and I both went to public school. We have supported SRES and given our financial resources and time and heart and soul into our, in particular, school. And it's letting us down. You know, we support our teachers, we went fed for ed, our students had time off for that, and now we're forced to sit here like laying ducks, blocking our students' Zoom where they couldn't even get us on to call in an appropriate time. It's hard, and we're working parents. My husband and I work outside of the home, so now we are forced to bring in tutors and, you know, outside resources. And I have to be honest, unfortunately, we're now looking into private education because they have to give their family options. And we need the options. Our kids went on to summer camp all summer, they have had protocols and safety regulations, and everyone has done great. These kids need school. I'm a medical provider myself, I'm in dermatology, so I can't speak to the level of a pediatrician. But I see young children losing their hair. I have high schoolers losing their hair due to stress, they're depressed, they're wrecked. And we have to speak and speak out, but we have the options. If you don't feel comfortable sending your child, then we have the option of the distance learning, that's not so online. And for us parents who have a plan in place, we trust our schools and we want to continue to scare children succeed, we need to have the option. continue to share children's succeed, we need to have the option and we need to look at this outside of a public school, outside of a, oh, uh, uh, on the, you know, administrative view and look at the heart of these kids because it's really hurting them. My daughter is five years old and six years old and they're, they're not going to learn this way. They get scared first and they are shocked, they are shocked. And then I have to log into virtual physical education and art and it's just not going to happen. And we will, as long as many other families that, um, unfortunately have already looked into the five-minute education realm because it's our only option. So I need you guys to fully look at the heart of these kids and give them a chance, give them a chance.
Okay. Ms. Walter, I want to thank you for sharing your experiences with us and, um, but I, I needed to interrupt to tell you your, the three minutes.
Thank you.
You were at the three-minute mark. So thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Jonathan, caller number five.
We have Jason Latos on the.
Um, I'm sorry, it's, I don't know if it's a Mr. or Mrs. Latos.
I wanted to thank you for sharing your CDC results and, um, but I, I needed to interrupt to tell you, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, Jonathan, I'm sorry, we're, we're having some difficulty hearing. Is the next caller, is it, is it Latos?
Jason Latos.
Jason Latos. Okay. Ms. Ms. Mr. Latos, um, are you available to speak?
I'm sorry. Yes, I'm here. Mister.
Mister. Oh, thank you.
You can't hear me?
Can you? Yes. But we are having some difficulty. We have background noise, Jonathan. There's some background noise possibly. Mr. Latos.
He has, he has, he has to turn off your, your video camera.
Oh, uh, Mr. Latos, I think you need to mute your computer because we're possibly hearing ourselves speak.
Okay, I can move. Yeah, better?
Okay, we're here. And you'll have three minutes to speak. And, um, if it's past the three-minute mark, I will need to interrupt you, just to, to warn you.
Understood.
All right, you have three minutes. Go ahead and speak.
First, I would like to thank you for having me and, um, go over a couple of questions and a couple of concerns I have. I'm a father of two. I have a five-year-old kindergarten and, uh, soon to be eight-year-old, a third grader. And, uh, my, one of my main concerns is, uh, I guess rule adherence to the mask wearing. How are we going to make sure that's happening? I've had some incidences, incidences where I went to go pick up the food and I saw them not wearing their masks, uh, handing out the food and, I mean, little stuff like that could really have a pretty big impact. So I've always drawn by the rule of what you can see is an indicator of what's actually happening behind the scenes, but concerning. And I was just wondering how, how we can make sure that it's being taken care of, it's worth 100%, zero tolerance on that. Um, also, I have, um, I take care of my mother and my 92-year-old grandmother, and , uh, one of them has autism years. So is there any way that we could help families who have extended families, who have a higher vulnerability rate? What, is there anything we can do to help protect them even more? Um, also, another topic would be, um, I know that schools have started, there's been some bad and some good, but I think it's, it'd be pertinent to wait to see how other schools go through all this a little bit longer, just so they can work out the chain. So we're not running over any speed bumps that we did becoming and we can implement everything they've gone through and learned from. I think that'd be a lot better. Um, kindergarten, that's one of my main concerns, is how are we going to implement any kind of social distancing with kindergarteners? You know, I can, I'm constantly trying to control just my kids. I can't imagine a classroom without them being just mingled together. So that really scares me of my son bringing something home unintentionally, but, you know, I don't, I don't see how you can guarantee that kind of safety with, with their kind of, uh, student at that age. They don't know any better. I mean, they're just kids having fun. Um, also, I've had a really positive experience at home with my students. Well, I'm fortunate, no disrespect to the last caller, but I am fortunate to be able to stay home with them and they are loving it. My kindergarten, at first, the screen of the laptop got to him. I moved him into the living room and connected it through HDMI to my 5-inch plan TV, but he's now in the living room. It's like he's in the classroom and it, it changed his experience, uh, a complete 180. He's in there dancing, loving it, talking to the teacher. It's, it's incredible. Also testing at school, what, what quick results are we going to be doing? I, I don't know if they, uh, said anything about it, but I haven't heard anything for teachers and students. Um, yeah, and that would be it. Again, I, and no disrespect to the last caller, I, I sound like she's going through a lot. I mean, I know my interaction with my students, with my kids is making the difference because I'm in, I'm going back and forth, back and forth, and I am with them when they're in class, especially the kindergarten, because he can't do it alone. He has to have me like that the whole time. And that makes.
Mr. Latos?
Experience amazing. He loved it. So with that, I would say.
Latos, can you hear me? Uh, uh, your three minutes is up, so I needed to interrupt you.
Yes, I was.
Because we need to move to the next caller. So thank you so much for sharing your experience.
Thank you very much for having me.
Thank you. Uh, Jonathan, do we have a sixth caller?
We have Heather Pyle now.
All right. Hello, Ms. Pyle. You have three minutes to speak.
Hi there, I'm here.
Okay. And at the three-minute mark, if you watch your screen, you'll see that you'll need to stop.
Never looking at that.
Oh, and you need to either move from your computer or mute it because otherwise we can hear the background.
Yeah. Okay, how's that?
That's perfect. Thank you. You may start.
Is my, is my volume okay?
Your volume, yes. We can hear you.
Okay. Okay, great.
So you may start.
Can I go over?
Yes, you may start.
Thank you. Thank you for taking my call and, uh, it's nice to be able to have, uh, through the other public and what, um, opinions they have. I'm actually a very good friend and neighbor of Dr. Susan's, so, you know, always appreciate her opinion and, um, you know, hearing the other doctors, whether they're practicing doctors or not practicing doctors, you know, certainly everyone's opinion matters. Uh, I do want to come from a slightly different direction and I'm really writing to you or talking to you because I'm a concerned parent, especially you all are. Um, I have a son that's a freshman and one is a junior at, um, uh, Desert Mountain High School. And, um, we have always been very supportive of the community. I, I've been one to stand out on Thompson Peak, Parkway, Holstein, encouraging everyone to vote for the override. I have been a classroom, I have been such a advocate for public schools. Um, so I, I'm with you and I stand with you and the teachers. Um, so I would ask that since we have supported you, now it's your time to support us. And really what I'm asking for is freedom of choice. You know, for those parents and teachers, and I'm hearing some of them on the call the next night, that do not feel comfortable or have multi, you know, family members, wealthy generational family members, that do not feel comfortable returning classrooms, um, take the option of online school. For those parents and teachers and students who want to choose an in-person learning should also have that option. It really needs a leadership with them. We need our children to be educated. A one-size-fits-all online school does not work. There, it, it works for some, uh, kids that are self-proficient, self-drivers. I have a house full of boys, teenage boys. It is not working and, and they are failing. So I am asking for choice. You know, when we think about it, there were school shootings happening all around the nation. There was not a vision to online school. Our kids' safety was at risk and parents, teachers and students were willing to do for this. There were changes, precautions, preparations made, um, in case of school violence, but everyone stayed in the classroom. If you think about our parents when they were young, their parents were terrified to send them to school for them to be exposed to polio. Could we send them to school to learn? It was worth the risk. I think the difference is we have a lot more lawyers. You know, but I want to tell you, I will sign whatever waiver necessary. If my child gets COVID, gets hospitalized and dies, it will not be the fault of the school or the district. Life is full of risk. My child is more likely to die in a car accident on the way to school. And I let him get in the car and although I'm scared and fearful when he's gone from me, I let him be that. Another example is my stepson who has diabetes type one is starting to be seeing you in the fall and that includes moving into the dune. So I, you know, risk happens and we are willing to take for this. The other piece I want to talk about is cases. There are, it's bad sites. People are being reported as cases when they don't even get tested. They go for the test, they don't take the test, and then they get a note saying that your public health is wrong and can make policies based on bad data, it's not right. So anyway, I just really want to thank you for hearing me tonight. I'm, I'm very concerned about the direction that we're going as a, as a nation, as a state.
Ms. Ms. Pyle, you will need to wrap it up.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. I don't want to abandon our public schools, but I have to look after the needs of my individual students.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Pyle.
And I will look for other options. Thank you.
Thank you. Jonathan, is there a seventh caller?
We have Sarah Ankers on the line.
All right. Ms. Ankers?
Hello, yes.
Hi, Ms. Ankers. Could you please mute your computer because we can, we can hear it in, in the room and we, it will be competing with your voice. You have three minutes and if you'll watch your screen, you'll see that you'll have a 30-second warning and then a stop warning. And if you would please stop speaking when, uh, you see the stop sign, we'd be appreciated. So, uh, you may, you may speak.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I want to say I, I agree with, uh, with the recent callers who've been talking about we really need to open in-person learning. Um, and I did hear the statistics, but I think this is where I heard from one of the pediatricians, that one in nine children who get COVID ended in a hospital. And I was like, whoa, throw in the setup. And that's not quite right. And maybe I just heard what the doctor said, but looking at the COVID site, uh, I'm sorry, looking at the CDC site, it says cumulative COVID-19, 50 hospitalization rates among children less than 18 years old during this surveillance period of 8,000,000. Well, that's much different than one in nine. Um, beyond that, one of my comments was, as far as temperature checks, do we do reopen in person? Um, are there temperature checks can be planned? My daughter has been at preschool, her preschool opened a kindergarten virtual learning center for their, their pre-K graduates. So she's there along with other kids who are at other school districts doing, doing distance learning. Uh, but one of the things they do is that everyone has had a temperature check and they come in, both visitors and children have to look for it. Um, so that seems to be one of the things that might be a good measure to take. Um, one of the things I wanted to ask about too is as far as elementary schools proceeding with reopening potentially before some high schools, just because from the data that I've heard, um, I'm not a parent, but some day I've heard that such a likely that young children spread it to other young children. And as we've heard from many other callers, with young children, distance learning is much more difficult. My husband and I both work full-time, so we can't help her with the distance learning. Um, we're often out of, on the call or, you know, at, uh, actually at the office. Um, and for kids who are very young, who really can't even read yet or type or be able to go from one program to another on the computer, um, that it, it makes distance learning difficult. So I was wondering if there was some thought given to if we are going to delay past September 8th as far as opening some elementary schools prior to opening middle and high school. I understand that middle and high school students often need to be in school. Um, and also as far as the distance learning centers, if there is a delay in the September 8th date, I was wondering if the registration for distance learning centers would be reopened? Um, because while I love a preschool, I am still paying preschool prices a week and love to be participating in a free online learning center. Um, because of the JOPIC five, six weeks, I wasn't going to move her. Um, but if we're looking at the past September 8th, I was just wondering if that option would be reopened, uh, for registration? And I don't have any further comments.
All right. Thank you very much. Uh, Jonathan, do we have another caller?
We have Sarah Waddelman on the line.
Sarah Waddelman?
Hello.
Hello, Sarah. Uh, you have three minutes to speak and please, um, I would appreciate if you'd watch your computer because you're, you'll be given a 30-second warning and then a stop warning. And if you could stop your comments at the three-minute mark, that would be appreciated. And we look forward to hearing you. You may begin.
Thank you. Okay, great. I am a mom of four, basically half a rich kindergarten twin, a third grader and a fifth grader, and struggling here, struggling. I have kindergarten, they're fine, but I would say 60% of the time, their attention wanders, they're rolling on the ground, coughing up the food. Had to hire a full-time nanny to come in to fit with the kindergarten twins. Um, my third grader, there's constant connectivity issues with the internet. Um, one, the teachers are teaching from home, majority, not kindergarten teachers, but the other teachers are teaching from home. They're having to deal with that problem, random internet problems with other people. The teachers are going to my sitter and I listen to the, the calls, um, the in-class and still less sometimes. But I didn't, it's like, it's like, you're frozen. My cell phone blocked out this morning, not getting some warning, uh, lessons and, uh, and they weren't recorded. So there was nowhere to go and the teachers picked up on that a bunch of times. It's a disaster. It's, it's, it's not working for them. It's not working for me. Now, the guidelines are pretty blocking my, and I'm very excited on opening on the 8th. I just might hang in there till then, but, um, it looks like from the website that the season 100, 100,000 good lines, uh, COVID-like illnesses, 10%, only nine will feed ahead. And the positive positivity, we are well, you know, opening, uh, I guess we're really like 700,000, uh, somewhere between 5 and 10, and I guess it's 70% online aggregate of numbers. Um, so, uh, we could be open. And, uh, I think the problem that we've all had is just the goalpost is kept moving. And we're all waiting and hoping to meet these guidelines. And I'm feeling once we do, which we have, we are there. I mean, it's not on the website, it's called they left, but, uh, I think it's the university, the university of Fannie, uh, and furthermore, I will tell you, I know it's moving, most of my neighbors are private education and the only part of the country that I'm moving to charter private education, a corner pit out, uh, they are just not having that. I love public education. I grew up public educated. I'd like to stay through, but I feel it's not going to be open after the 8th of September. And the cases are continuing to turn down, which it seems to be doing.
Ms. Ms. Water?
Yep.
Your, your three, your three minutes is up. I appreciate you sharing and, um, we will need to go to our next caller. So thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Jonathan, we have another caller.
We have Helen Shulus on the line.
Helen Shulus. I apologize if I'm saying your last name incorrectly, which I have a feeling I am because it was difficult to hear the last part. But you have three minutes. If you could watch your computer screen, you'll be given a 30-second warning and then if you could stop when the stop card comes up. And thank you. We look forward to hearing.
Thank you. Thank you to the board for allowing me to comment on item 11B, approval of metrics to determine when schools may resume in-person instruction, which my understanding is you will be taking an action item. My request to the board is to respectfully ask that you vote against any metric or any standard that makes it more difficult or more stringent to open our schools that are more stringent than other essential businesses and other essential industries where, where workers have been showing up to work since the pandemic hit. I want to applaud first and thank everybody in the public education system, your selfless public servants and your selfless workers. And I applaud you and thank you for putting our children and their critical education first. Our children have been relegated to online learning since spring break of a prior school year. Online learning is no substitute for in-person instruction, interaction and social development. Additionally, our kids' mental health has been deteriorating and will be placed at higher risk with each passing week that we are denied being allowed to return to school in person. in person. Since the pandemic, many industries and their workers have been deemed essential. Our healthcare workers, they must take care of our sick patients. Without them, you, your family members, friends, and neighbors could die. So they show up to work, including one of our family members, has shown up to work every single day. They do take a risk, but they also take precautions. They follow CDC guidelines, and they take precautions so they themselves do not get infected or infect other patients. And they show up to work to protect us and our communities, and to help and to give us the healthcare that our healthcare and our communities need. They have no choice. We applaud them, and we thank those healthcare workers for our service. They are essential. Our workers in grocery stores, you go every day to pick up your milk, your bread, because you need to eat. Those workers are essential. We must eat. They cannot choose to not show up. So we deem them essential. Yes, they take a risk, but they also take precautions. They follow CDC guidelines, they take those precautions, they show up because they're essential, they're essential for all of us. So similarly, I reach out to the board and the community to recognize that our teachers and our education system are as essential to our children as healthcare workers and grocery store workers. We applaud them, we thank them as we do our healthcare workers and our grocery workers. Yes, they will take a risk, some risk, but they can also take precautions. We have the guidelines, we follow the guidelines. So I reach out and I ask the board to please not to vote against any metric that is going to make it more difficult for our teachers and our education systems to open up as soon as possible.
Helen, I need to interrupt you.
Teachers would not be deemed essential workers.
Helen, I need to interrupt you.
And our grocery workers can keep our communities safe and keep us fed, our teachers must be allowed to educate our children in person. Thank you very much.
Helen, okay. Thank you very much. Jonathan, do we have another caller?
Kelsey Haynes is on the line.
Yes.
Kelsey Haynes?
Haynes.
Oh, Haynes, thank you. Ms. Haynes, I understand we have a delay, so you're not able to see our three-minute stopwatch. So I will have to interrupt you at the three-minute mark. So you have three minutes to speak, and I will have to interrupt you at the three-minute mark if you haven't completed your comments. So thank you for that. You may go ahead and speak.
Thank you so much. I want to say thank you for hearing me, and I want to acknowledge all of the expertise that we've heard, parents, parents, the very complicated and complex situations. I happen to be the person who worked in education administration for a long time, and now works for a national mental health organization, and I feel for you all who are still being disabled and who are involved in these decisions. I am calling this girl because I have a specific question, which is that I understand there were staff changes, and this could be rumor mill, and I hope it could be answered for me. But I understand that for parents who chose to go online for the first semester, which is our story, and we are managing that, and it's been working with the family, and it's going okay, so I'm hopeful that feedback. I heard that there's a potential that we wouldn't be guaranteed our state at our school starting in January, where we are currently supposed to be enrolled at the FLO, which I already discussed it. So I just wanted to ask about that, voice my concern, we're juggling a lot of things with the hope of being where we wanted to be at our home school in January and not hearing here and hearing first. Again, thank you for all the hard work you're doing, this is not easy task, and I'm grateful, grateful for your time and for all your hard work. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Haynes. Jonathan, do we have another caller?
We have Sarah Dorn on the line.
All right, Ms. Dorn, hello. You'll have three minutes. At the three-minute mark, I will need to interrupt you if you haven't completed your comments. So you may begin.
Okay. All right, thank you. My name is Sarah Dorn, and I have two children, one's in fourth grade at Cocheese, and the other one is in sixth grade at Kokopah. And, you know, this is so, this online learning, it is just no way to learn for these children. And it's very disappointing to hear Dr. Menzel talk about how the plaza response to online learning that first week, that is the exact opposite of what I've heard from everyone I've passed through. Now, to give the school credit, it is better than the spring, but it is still horrible. Everyone I know has kids in tears this week. Both my children, who have never cried after going to school, have been in tears multiple times. It is so sad to watch as a parent, to see these kids struggle to learn in areas that they never had a problem before. I heard there were doctors, the doctors spoke earlier, and, you know, there's experts that say multiple things on this. I've done a lot of research, I've read numerous articles, and for everyone that says it's dangerous, there's another one that says children are very low risk, and that's what the numbers have showed so far. We, as parents, have weighed the risks, and we chose to return to school in person. We want our kids to be given that chance. It is just not fair to have them lose what's almost going to be a half a year of school for something that most of us would be very little affected by, and we know the risk and are willing to take them. It is our right to be able to send our children to school. We need to be creative. This problem requires creative solutions, and I know our school community could come together to help solve some of the problems that might come up with in-person learning. I'm on the APT board at Cocheese, I'm also on the state council. We are ready to help, and we are able to raise money to make it work, but we just really need to get our children back in school as soon as possible. Otherwise, we are going to destroy the school community that has been so great. So many people are going to leave because of all this, and it makes me very sad for the future of our schools here in Scottsdale if we don't get these kids back in soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dorn. Jonathan, another caller?
Our next caller is Mimi Telith.
I'm sorry, Mimi Telith? Ms. Telith, are you there?
I'm here, I just see it away.
Okay, you have three minutes, and I will have to interrupt you at the three-minute mark if you haven't finished your comments, but you may begin.
Thank you very much. Thank you for hearing me. I'm very concerned with the safety for our children, the teachers, and all of the school staff. There's just some chances of guarantee that all of the guidelines will be followed and adhered to. While it could be one person out of 20, for example, that tries to follow the guidelines, it only takes one person to spread it to many. It takes one person to drive aggressively and not follow the rules, and one of those is a potato.
Mimi, I'm going to interrupt you for a minute. Mimi, I don't, we're having difficulty hearing you. I don't know if you need to be farther away from the mic or closer? Maybe slow down a little bit? You can start over if you would like.
Is this better?
Well, try again, because it wasn't enough for me to be able to tell.
Is this better?
Yes.
So what I'm saying is I'm really concerned with the safety for our children, the teachers, and the school staff. It's just impossible to guarantee that all of the guidelines will be followed and adhered to. And while it could just take one person out of 20 to not follow the guidelines, it only takes one person to spread it to others. It only takes one person to drive aggressively and not follow the rules to cause an accident, and that accident could be fatal. The point is here, there's just no way to skip. The same thing applies here. Between one of the top states in Arizona that just got the world first with COVID, the people refused to follow the guidelines. People went out without their masks, and people now are still complaining about having to wear a mask, walk one way to a grocery store, and adults are setting this kind of example, and the tip of following that. I went with my children to the drive-to-computer pickup at the middle school, and one of the women that worked there, she was a staff member, wasn't wearing her mask like, she had her kid. And then she was panting in my face because she had to walk back and forth, back from car to car. The mother and her daughter run high school to pick up a laptop at the high school, and she wasn't wearing a mask with her daughter. So, you know, I just don't see how this is going to be enforced. And while I understand that a lot of parents are struggling to have their kids home, and kids aren't, you know, adapting well, but this is a small sacrifice they have to make. I mean, how are they going to enforce it when they go to lunch? Are they all going to have to eat with their mask on? It's not feasible. When they change classes, are they going to let people out, stated as five and eight? They can't do that either. And while, you know, one of the parts, it's been such a job, yeah, it is a simple job, but there's a difference here because at a grocery store, you don't have 15 or 30 people all surrounding you at once. Or if you go to the post office, you don't have 15 or 30 people surrounding you at once. And if one person gets sick, and it's confirmed that the whole class gets quarantined, because now you're talking about two weeks of missing school. And is it really worth bringing it home to family members that are immune compromised? I know people that have died from this, so I'm really sensitive to this, because people think it's a joke or no big deal. And if someone in their family gets really sick or dies from it, I know someone that was taken off of life support for this, and within 10 minutes, their lungs were gone. So to me, this is a big safety thing. No one's going around in plexiglass, no one's going to go policing people to wear their mask. I know that kids aren't necessarily going to be responsible to wear it all the time, putting other people at risk. Who's going to go around to the school to make sure they're all doing that? I mean, they're saying, okay, one, this kid could get called on, second, this kid could get told to do, third time, you're out. But it takes three times to potentially infecting many. I just really truly don't understand how we can have, you know, they're saying, don't have masks, masks gathering, but how can you do that when you're in a school full of people? And as we already saw, there's a school that opened up, I think it was in Georgia, and they've already had an outbreak, and they've had to shut down. And now, so we're just prolonging the time for this to continue. There are ways around being able to do this online. My kids are doing it online. I have a full-time job that I have to get involved in helping with their homework, and I am tired at the end of the day helping, but it's a sacrifice. The weird, as parents, that we're holding on to, and not just for our kids, but we should think about the administration, and the teachers, and all the staff that are there. I mean, one person makes a sick, I think that affects the earth. And they use the bathroom, they put the faucet, and there's a germ there. How do we guarantee that it's not like that? I just don't see how we can guarantee that in a school. So thank you for listening, and I appreciate your time.
Excuse me, you're at your three minutes. We do need to stop your comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
We have quite a few people in the queue. We would, we have an option in which we can announce that we actually can have a time limit, a total aggregate time limit, and close, or we could limit the number of minutes on the call. And so I'm looking at our board to see if we have an interest in maybe limiting it to two minutes per phone call, or there's the option of just extending for another 15 minutes. Or we could keep it as we go, and we just listen to every single person. I just want to get people's feedback.
How many people are in the queue?
How many do we have now?
We have 10 currently.
We have 10.
Well, could we close the queue at a certain time?
We can. We could say we'll listen for the next bit.
Well, no, I would say close the queue. I mean, not taking cards, so.
Okay.
Usually once.
Okay. So we can stop the queue.
Just to be clear, it's board policy, B-E-D-H, and if we had an in-person meeting, the requirement is that those wishing to address the board would submit a card prior to the meeting. Because we've had the queue, we asked them to get online before the superintendent's public comments, and then we would listen afterward. What is happening here is people are joining the queue after that period of time, and we didn't have a process for managing that, which is why we're noting it now, because it's, we're adding continuously for people who want to speak, which would be outside of the parameters that have been normally set.
Close the queue. All right. Does anybody have an opinion as to if we limit the time?
We have closed the queue, I'm assuming at this point.
So we haven't, but I think we can. We've got 10 in queue now. That exceeds what would have normally been the case, because the 10 in queue now are more than were in queue when we finished the first time.
I would recommend closing the queue since we are...
Okay, we can close the queue now. It looks like the board sees that, but then go ahead and keep it at the three minutes for the 10 people, or reduce that to two minutes?
Yeah, I think we keep it at three. People have prepared comments for three minutes. I would hate to not, you know.
Yeah, I think if we listen to the 10 in the queue for their three minutes, that's a fair compromise in that way, since they have called in, even though it was after the start of the comments and everything, that gives them, I mean, they have been waiting, so I think that would be appropriate.
We're all in agreement to that? Okay.
We'd just say to them, to our passionate callers, if you can keep it under three, thank you.
All right. And hopefully you heard one of our past presidents say that. Yes?
Would it be okay if we say that we will close the queue from additional calls in three minutes, so that anyone that wants to make a comment has three minutes to get in the queue, and then we will shut it? So that would be at 6:40, that we could close it, if that's okay?
Perfect.
That's perfect. All right, thank you. So we will be closing the queue at 6:40.
Is your mic on?
Yes. Thank you. All right, we do have an additional caller, and so Jonathan, and we will be giving our callers their three minutes. If you can keep it under three minutes, we do appreciate it. Next caller, Jonathan?
We have Brittany Walker on the line.
Brittany Walker. All right, Ms. Walker?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. You may start.
Hi, my name is Brittany Walker, and I'd like to start. I taught in the Scottsdale district, at Copper Ridge, I taught kindergarten. And one of the things that I went to school for, that I student taught for, that I trained for, was to teach a love of learning. That is gone. That is gone. You have spoken it from our children. They now cry, they don't want to get on the computer. What we are doing to our kids right now, it is terrible. This is not learning? This is awful. Everything I've ever learned, all the training that Scottsdale provided me with, throw it out the window, it doesn't matter. Kids learn hands-on. They learn hands-on. They don't learn staring at a screen. It's not healthy for them. It's not healthy to stare at a screen and not move and not talk to other kids. It's very, very sad, what is happening. And I just, I can't believe it's happening. And my neighbors, all, most of the private schools and the charter schools, they're all starting to go back. My kids get upset and say, why can't we go back to school? Everyone else is going back to school. And trust me, we are on the waiting list at the charters, at the private, they are so full that we can't even get in anywhere. I'm paying taxes, I'm paying taxes for this, and now I'm paying a tutor to help me, because it's not fair for me to be a mom and a teacher when I'm paying taxes for somebody else to do this. Do I get my taxes back? Because this is not the education I'm paying for. This is not what I'm paying for. So what happens next? Is there a mass accident out of public transportation? I mean, come on, guys. This is not okay, you all know it. This is not how kids learn.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Walker. I appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jonathan, next caller?
We have Nicole Havers on the line.
Nicole Havers, thank you. You have three minutes, and if you can say it, in less, that would be appreciated. And you may speak.
Great. Thank you so much for hearing me tonight, Dr. Menzel and the governing board. I so appreciate it. I have a beautiful senior at Desert Mountain High School. It's very upsetting that we had to start her even this way. I have a private preschool, I've been at a private preschool in the North Valley for about 20 years. We will start after Labor Day regardless, but my fear is exactly what I heard from another parent, that we will be leading kids to privates and charters due to their opening. Of course, we want to be safe, and I hear the doctors, and I see the science, I understand that, but I have been a great fortunate person to make... But I have been a great fortunate person to make plenty of friends in the Scottsdale District, both north and south. And over the last week, I have heard so, got so much done, the best I can to prepare them. They are frustrated, they're in tears at the end of every day. This is not what they, this is not how it's supposed to be. They want their kids in the classroom. And I'm just curious as to why Scottsdale never gave the teachers and those kids who want to be in class a choice? Perhaps if you had a teacher who chose to come back knowing the risks, and parents who wanted their kids in the classroom, to have the risk, knowing the risk, that they would be allowed to provide that for children. There are several schools that I have friends who have these EBL camps. There's 100 plus kids, maybe, less than that possibly, on campus. And they have their own students, three classroom doors down, and they won't come in their classroom. And it doesn't seem fair. I just wanted to put my input in on behalf of my teacher friends, who many of them have master's degrees, and they didn't go to school to teach as a, online as a pretty much person. So, best of luck for all your choices. I know this is very passionate, and I thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you very much, Nicole. Jonathan, next caller?
Susan Brown is on the line.
Susan Brown. Hello, Susan Brown? Can we hear you? You need to turn your computer on mute, please, because we can hear it through your microphone. Thank you. You have three minutes, and I will have to interrupt you if you do go beyond that. So, please be cognizant of the time. Thank you.
I just wanted to thank you all for everything you're doing, and I just wanted to say the, I'd like my kids to go back to school. I have four kids. Also, it's not safe for them. My son, he has asthma, and he's with an ulcer, and I feel bad for this. You know, also kids, like kindergartners, preschoolers, how are they supposed to wear masks all day? And how are we supposed to social distance? How are they supposed to social distance?
Okay, Ms. Brown, do you have a...
About it.
Okay. Well, are you finished?
Yeah.
Wait, thank you, thank you very much for your comments. Jonathan, the next caller?
Eileen Judd is on the line.
Eileen Judd?
Yep.
Judd?
Judd.
Judd. All right, Ms. Judd, you have three minutes. Thank you for your comments. You may begin. Ms. Judd, you may begin. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
We cannot hear you.
I'm on the video at Devon. I have fifth graders, a sixth grader, three-year-old, and a six-month-old. I just read what the data says about children gaining low for cancer front. Problem is with that data is that the kids have been kept away from playgrounds and pools and things like that, and they just kept out of public. And so that's why the transfer, some kids getting it, sharing with their family members is a blow. And once the kids go back to school, the virus will start. I honestly believe that. I'm high risk, my husband is high risk, and I have a baby. At Devon, our EDL is way better than last year, and I only chose that because I wanted my kids to know a teacher, and it was the hardest decision of my life, having to be online at EDL, because I was not knowing if, when my kids went back to school, whether it was safe for me and my husband to not get the coronavirus, let alone my five-month-old baby, just because my kids brought it home. We were over at my relatives' house, and my kids kept taking off their masks, and I don't trust my kids to go to school and keep their masks on and not touch other students and any face. And I know that if school opens up and goes safe, I will keep my kids home, keep them safe. That is my providence. They love school, they miss school, but I have to keep the safety of my family at the highest regard versus having them go back to school and wrecking my life.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you very much, Ms. Judd. Jonathan, the next caller?
Cornelius Mader is on the line.
Mavis?
Yes.
Cornelius is, I apologize, Maven? Cornelius, is it Maven, Mavis?
Oh, Mader.
Well, hi, thank you. You may, you have three minutes to speak, and you may start.
Yeah, perfect. Yes, thank you. So, at first, I just want to thank everybody. I know these decisions are hard on everybody, and there's, it's impossible to make everybody happy. So, you know, thank you for everything you guys are doing. I did want to bring up a few points, especially to some of the other parents calling in. I think there's an important point that some callers are missing when they call in. Everyone wants their kids to go back to school and free me. My son is in kindergarten at Desert Canyon, he did pre-K there as well. But unfortunately, when you look at our current news articles right now, I mean, literally at this second, all of the news articles, Wall Street Journal, everybody else, is mentioning all the schools opening and quickly having to immediately close. And everybody calling in wants stability. I want stability. But unfortunately, that is not stability when we're gonna go to school and possibly in one semester, go back to online. That's completely opposite of what I think people are asking. Another thing that, you know, people want the emotional part of it, you know, the socialization and all of that, but the way that the socialization is going to be done, you can't go hug your friends, you can't give them a high five, you can't be close to them, you can't take touch with them, and you can't share a ball. Do we really want them to learn that's how you play with friends at such an early age in kindergarten? They should learn the proper way on how to communicate and play with friends, when it is safe to open and when they can do that. And then I think one of the other important points is that any of the support that needs to be given should be given to the teachers as well as to schools themselves. So, you know, having those windows for kids that need extra support, or having those windows for kids that need to be pushed a little harder because they're, you know, ahead, I think that is important to help and support the online school system. And then I guess my final point, you know, I'm running out of time, is that, to make a point is, look how far all of you guys are sitting away from each other. The most that you guys are able to offer our kids is two to three feet apart right now in the classroom. If it's not safe for adults to be closer with each other, or government buildings to be open, why is it safe for our kids to be in it and to see how and if they're going to be affected by this first, and bring that home to others, or even affect teachers? If adults don't feel safe doing it, why wouldn't we want to do that to our kids?
Well, thank you very much, Ms. Maven. Thank you. Thank you for your comments and for being succinct with your points.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jonathan, the next caller?
The next caller is Roxanne Arias.
Roxanne Arias. I believe you're, you're gonna need to mute your computer because we can hear the microphone there. I think you might have. Thank you. So, we have, you have three minutes for your comments. If you can make your points in a shorter period of time, it'd be appreciated, and you may begin. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. You may begin.
Hello? Hello, I'm here.
All right, you may begin speaking.
Okay, my name's Roxanne, and I just...
We lost you, Roxanne. Roxanne, if you're losing contact, we can ask you to go to our website, to the Let's Talk, so that we can hear your views, because it sounds like we might...
Can you hear me?
I can hear you now. We'll give it another try. Go ahead and start speaking.
Tell me about that. Thank you.
Uh-huh.
Thank you for having me. I just wanted to raise my opinion. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I just want to make it real quick. I have a middle school creator, and I also have a...
I'm sorry, Roxanne, we, we are having technical difficulty hearing you.
Wonderful. It's hard to pick up, but...
Roxanne? Roxanne, can you hear me? We are having difficulty hearing you. You know what? I would like to ask you to maybe write us an email, and then maybe go into Let's Talk.
Roxanne, this is Debbie Spalding. I hope you can hear me. We cannot hear you well on your, on the call, and so we would like you to submit a Let's Talk suggestion. Just go to our website and click on Let's Talk, so that we can hear, or I should say, see your comments. We are gonna have to disconnect you because we cannot hear you properly.
But we will make sure that we, we see your Let's Talk. All right, Jonathan, the next caller?
Leann Nichols.
Leann Nichols, are you on the line?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you. You have three minutes, and I will have to interrupt you to stop at the three-minute mark. So, you may begin.
Thank you. I thought I addressed a couple things. As far as I understand, children have difficulty at school. However, I have two kids who have to sit with a computer for regular school hours, the one that ages or triggers due to that, and the other one is experiencing migraines. So, it's this kind of, sort of flexibility for if you cannot sit and be in front of that computer for that extended period of time, and having that expectation upon them, then that's bringing back stress as far as they're following online learning, but at a slower pace, but at their own pace to actually learn, where they're having, pretty much forced to sit in front of a computer when they're not used to that, and that's causing more health problems. And it's also single mom, three kids, online learning, and my daughter has an IEP where she should have a para, and my expectation was that the para would be able to still connect with her online and help her so that I could also put my attention to the other children who need that. But it seems like other students with IEPs or anyone that needs additional help is not receiving it. And, you know, I appreciate what's been done, but it's just kind of like, where is the extra help that she needs and the para that she had assigned, or the new one I recommended? Nothing's been done, and it's just triggering more seizures and more problems, and then that's just causing more stress and causing learning to be difficult, and to the point of, where they're getting kind of tardies when they don't make it back to the computer in time, and it's just a little overwhelming to try to keep up with these things, as well as healthcare problems that I have to face because of the new regulations for online learning. And it's what, they don't mind the online learning, but what, things are being in place for parents or the students that are okay with not going back to the school, but the resources still being available to them to be able to have their para or their 101 or whatever, to be able to help them through the process and emotional distress and all the different things they're going through because they're needing an extra sit front for so many such long periods of time versus being able to get a break, and, you know, the break for about 15 minutes, they feel, spend a ton of time there in front of a computer that they're not used to. And like I said, that's now causing them to take the doctor's appointment versus allowing them to go at their own pace, and for teachers being understanding of a single mom trying to make sure that three kids are learning and ask for additional help and resources, and they can move. And so I'm just wondering where that ends.
All right. Look, thank you, it's the three, excuse me, Ms. Nichols, thank you very much for sharing your experiences, and it, the three minutes is up, so we do have to move on to our next caller, but thank you very much. Jonathan, the next caller, please?
Jennifer Sessis on the line.
Jennifer, hello, Jennifer?
Hello, I've already muted my TV.
Okay, thank you. You have three minutes to comment, and I will have to interrupt you at the three-minute mark to, to our next callers. So, please begin speaking.
All right, thank you so much for your time. Good evening, Governing Board, Dr. Magdalene. I would just like to urge you to continue to follow the scientific metrics that have been put forth by the state, looking at the data very carefully, and perhaps an urging to be proactive as we move into the next quarter and next semester. It would be an amazing thing to include the Teachers Association in many of these decisions that you're making, because I think that educators on the ground can really help with the decisions that you're making and how they will affect students, whether it's in a face-to-face situation in person or over distance learning. I'd like to also urge you that if we cannot guarantee the safety and the metrics that the CDC requires us when people return to school, then we should be measuring that also. It would have been lovely to see a proactive stance, like many of the other larger districts in the state, that took the first quarter and really took summer and put a lot of energy into doing distance learning the best that we could. So, again, I urge you to follow the metrics, because educators are there to teach our children to learn. They are not there to give up their lives. They are not there, they did not choose to be doctors, they did not choose to be emergency responders. They are there to educate, and when you ask them to put their life at risk for the wages that they make, I think it's completely unfair, and not just educators off at risk, but our entire community is at risk once we go beyond the metrics just to get in-person learning. And I am done. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Jennifer. Jonathan, we have another caller.
Zach Hilgret is on the line.
Zach, Mr. Hilgret?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, thank you. You have three minutes, and you may begin now.
All right, thank you. Well, thank you, Dr. Magdalene, President Beckman, and the board members. I have, I don't envy your position at all in the decisions you have to make of both you guys. I have a, two kids in the district, one in first grade and one in sixth grade, and another one of the joint activities in kindergarten. And so far, you know, both of them have just been doing fantastic with the EBL learning. They get excited about it, they're just active to it. And it's, you know, it's not without, it's bugs here and there, but that's probably little teeth of what teachers go with on a day-to-day basis, you know, in person with them. You know, the screen time is an understandable concern. You know, I just took up real quick and applied to the American Academy of Child and Adolescent Pediatrics, and it took a lot of hours a day on screen, and a teenager up to nine hours. And what we've seen is the actual screen time during the EBL with breaks and activities is probably no more than three to four hours. So, I think that issue is easily resolved by reducing some of the... is easily resuscitated by reducing some of the video game time, uh, later on and I would have to be, you know, looking to, uh, to the factors in the CDC guidelines on reopening, uh, and error on the side of, of, uh, of health and safety, not only of the students of course, but the teachers and staff who don't fit an option, uh, to come in online or not. Um, you know, there, from kindergarten through high school, there's 26 semesters of school. They're talking about one semester here, uh, which is about 4% of that education. So, you know, while I'd love nothing more than my kids to be able to be in school and have in-person, uh, learning, there's plenty of opportunities for that in their education when they're not, uh, living in a pandemic and have to help their children and, uh, and the teacher and staff. So, uh, that was all I had. Uh, thank you for the time and, uh, uh, and, uh, both you guys are, are able to make way because you're getting-
Thank you very much Zach. Appreciate your comments. Uh, Jonathan? Is it our last caller? Oh, no, I guess not.
No, we have a few more.
A few more, okay.
This is Deandra Davis.
Mr. Davis or Mrs. Davis?
Deandra.
Sandra, Mrs. Davis?
Deandra, yep.
All right. Thank you. Um, you may begin speaking. You have three minutes. Can you hear me, Ms.?
Thank you, this is, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. I'll be quick. I just want to really applaud the teachers, um, they're doing EDL and they have been absolutely amazing what they have been able to do. I'm a parent with young children in the district. I really do empathize with all the parents that are struggling with the distance learning. It is hard, but it's not about things being hard, it's about public help. And if, you know, a child has homework that is hard, as parents, we don't just tell them that they don't have to do it, we help them. And the district is providing help through the EDL camps and, uh, the superintendent mentioned that the numbers at the camps are low and the days could even expand to allow more people in those camps. And if you are struggling, there is help available. It's just temporary and I believe that we can get through this and when it is safe, we can return to school in person. I just wanted to quickly also address the mental health concerns. I, I do agree that this is so tough, especially on some of the older students, um, and younger, but, um, it is tough to do distance learning. But again, we have, we have to find help and ways to get through this until it is safe to return. The mental health will be at risk for students if we do return and like a previous caller mentioned, if we are constantly opening and closing schools, that is going to be very, very tough on the, on the students. Also, it would be extremely tough, God forbid, if teachers or family members of their friends were sick or not able to return to school because of the virus or even die. I don't want to see that happening. I don't want our district on to. I think we are doing an amazing job with the distance learning and I think we can continue to do that until it is safe to return. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis. Jonathan, next caller.
Kelly Kane is online.
Uh, Ms. Kane, hello? You may begin speaking and you, you may begin speaking and you have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Um, I don't really have anything planned on this call. Um, I just kinda wanna give you a little background. Um, I think a lot of people, at least for this first month, are just kinda rolling with the fact that we're doing online learning and hoping we're gonna open September 8th. Um, I come from a two-parent household. Um, my husband is actually working from home, I work from home. I have a job that is very time-consuming. Um, my, I have a child that is in pre-k and one in first grade. He is on a pre-k call for about 20 minutes and when he gets off, he keeps asking me if he can do homework and wants more to do and wants to learn. And then I have a schrader that I'm lucky is sitting there and doing her job and doing it well. However, she misses people and she misses the learning and the interaction. Um, also, I'm one of those awful parents that probably don't exist anymore and that my kids aren't on electronics all day. They aren't on screen time a lot, so when my kids are like, ooh, I get to watch the computer for 30 minutes, that's awesome to them, but they're missing all the other aspects of, of what schooling is all about. Um, I'm also very familiar with daycares and I'm just kinda wondering why the daycares are all okay and we don't hear about the daycares. Is it because things aren't happening at the daycares, we're not hearing about it? Um, because I think that would be a good attempt to follow and figure out why the daycares are so successful. Um, I also feel like there are EDL camps, but when we signed up, they were all false. Um, then now you guys are calling, but I didn't obviously sign up. Um, my other thing is I know many parents are having to pay out of their pocket to have somebody sit next to their child and not necessarily be an educated person for that specific grade. And I think that's pretty frustrating when they can just be in their classroom instead. Um, I also feel if we are given the option as parents to send our kids or to keep them home, we should do just that. If I wanna send my children, I should get to send my children. If other people wanna stay at home and learn and be safe and not exposed to the people that are at the school, I think that should be an option. Because I feel like we all shouldn't just be told what to do anymore. We need to open it up. There's going to be outbreaks if we've been, you know, incarcerated for how many months. Especially in my kids, and it, they really have a summer, which is pretty upsetting because my husband and I are two full working-time parents and so they've been technically in this house since the early part of March and, and they're just screaming to get out, to just have human interaction. Um, I'm worried about their health, their mental wellbeing, um, and I, I just wish, I mean, this was more open for discussion. I, I know, you know, I've got common sense, I know exactly what's gonna happen. I know this is just a lot of venting and I know the minds of everybody are already made up.
Ms. Kane, excuse me.
I would think of some other people. I, I would appreciate it instead of just doing whatever everybody else is doing.
Ms. Kane, excuse me, but the three minutes is up, so I needed to interrupt you because we have to get to our next caller, but thank you very much. Jonathan? Uh, bye-bye. Jonathan? The next caller?
Lauren Leary is online.
All right, Ms. Leary? Are you there? Ms. Leary?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, thank you. Uh, you have three minutes to speak and, um, I will have to interrupt you, so be kind of aware of that and listen for me if the three minutes is up, but, uh, so you may begin now.
Okay. Hi, my name's Lauren Leary and, uh, I have a fourth grader and a first grader and I just wanted to call in and kind of make the main point that we should be about choice. All these people are calling in and talking about, you know, that they're scared of their kids going to school and the hand washing and will they have the masks and will the teachers do a good enough job protecting them? And I say to those people, they need to stay online. I completely understand that they're not ready for it, they're not comfortable with it and they should use the online option. For those of us who do feel that it is safe, we need to have the option to send our kids to school. They choose to take the risk that, they choose to take the risk of leaving them online in front of a screen every single day and I don't think that's a risk that I'm willing to take with my children. I see a difference in their behavior. I see a difference in their excitement to learn and I think that we're not realizing how difficult it is for these children to actually learn sitting in front of a screen. I used to teach first grade and what I see is a teacher who is trying her very best and doing an amazing job trying to teach these children, but it's absolutely impossible to teach the first graders how to read and everything else on a screen. Teachers cannot see what they're doing. They can't make the corrections when needed. It's impossible. So yes, I sit there all day doing that so that I'm a support system for my fourth, for my first grader. My fourth grader, different story, she is much more proficient, obviously, and she doesn't complain too much, but she has no social life outside of that screen. And I think it's absolutely insane that no one thinks about the mental health of these children and not just keep going off of statistics that many of what people say, they're not even through, they're scare tactics and that's a whole other story. So what I wanna focus on is choice. People have a choice to stay online and both of us should have a choice and our kids to school. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Jonathan, the next caller, please.
David Artsma.
Okay, Mr. Artsma?
Yes.
Hello, thank you. Um, you have three minutes and if you can do it in less time, that's appreciated, um, but you may begin.
Thank you for having me. A lot of the people keep talking about emotion. We keep trying to make these decisions based on emotion and not off of fact. Give our parents, give our children a choice. Um, COVID, the, the Journal of Pediatrics has said COVID affects children much, much less than adults. It transmitted much less than adults. According to the CDC, four and a half, we are, our children are four and a half more likely to die from the flu than they are of COVID. We are not basing these decisions off of data. We have, there's two arguments against reopening the schools. One of them is that what are we gonna do with our teachers? How are we gonna handle that? Give the teachers a choice. Let the teachers choose whether to come in or not. The other argument is just emotion. What are we gonna do with our parents? What are we gonna do with adults? What are we gonna do with the people that are immune compromised? Let them choose whether to be at school or to be online. There's 84 million children between the ages of five and 24 years old. There are 245 deaths in that group. What are we, what are we talking about? 245 deaths, but we keep acting like this is the one thing that is gonna stop our families. We go every day to different stores around the, around the world. 245 deaths within an 84 million person group. Let these people have the choices. Our children are just, we are destroying their confidence in the public school system. We are destroying them mentally, physically, um, emotionally, and we are also destroying their immune system by keeping them indoors. Let them be with their friends if they choose to be with their friends. Our children have never asked us, but they have asked to be in, in, in private school, to be in, in person. We have never thought about that until now and we are gonna make that decision. Give every single family, give these people a choice. Let them be in person, let them be online. We thought we had a choice, but you did not give it a choice. You took that away from us. That is not right, it is not fair. At no point does the data support shutting down these schools and no point does the data show shutting down South County Unified Schools, but we keep doing it. What are we doing? Are we worried about emotion? Are we worried about looking at? Or are we worried about data? Give the parents a choice immediately. Stop extending the date. If teachers do not want to be at school, give them individually the choice. Don't give it to the union, give it individually the choice. Care about the family, care about the children, let them make a choice. Look at the data. Stop making decisions emotionally. Let the data actually show us what's really happening because our children are safe. Thank you.
Thank you very much, uh, David. Uh, Jonathan? The, I believe the last caller?
This is our last caller for tonight, Hattie Combs.
All right, Ms. Combs, hello. You have three minutes and you may begin speaking. Thank you.
Hi, Dr. Menzel and, uh, the Governing Board. I would just like to point out a couple quick things, um, before we wrap up the public comment section. Um, you know, you guys started off by releasing several surveys to parents, um, starting over the summer and before the school year started and you gave parents a choice on whether or not we wanted to do an EDL or SOL with the idea that if we went, we chose the EDL model, that we would go, return to school on September 8th. It is very apparent that the board and, and Dr. Menzel is leaning towards using the metrics released by the Arizona Department of Health. And I would like to know, as, how, where is the parent's choice in that? We, as parents, have a choice to take our children to anywhere that we want, all over the valley. We can put them on an airplane with us and we can go on vacation. We can take our children anywhere, but we cannot take our children to school. You have taken that choice away from us by saying that you want to follow these metrics to release by the Arizona Department of Health. Where is the parent's choice? You are a public school district. Another thing I'd like to point out is that if you do subscribe to the Arizona Department of Health benchmark, then what is the district going to do about the large number of online class sizes that has been handed to our teachers? Our teachers are going above and beyond the call of duty and doing more work than they should have ever been asked to do. And the school district has layered them with increased class sizes and increased learning on their end to now have to take on technical issues and computer issues and device issues and program issues they should never have to take on. I want to know, what, why did, why are you taking away the parent's choice on whether we can bring our kids back to school? Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Combs. All right, that will end our public comment. Thank you very much for, um, your patience and for sitting in the queue. We'll move on to our, uh, can, excuse me? Oh, okay, yes. We will be taking a five-minute break. It is 7:17, so let's come back at 7:22.
Thank you.
Provide virtual learning for everyone with onsite supports as required by Executive Order 2020-51. The three core metrics are the COVID cases, and in this case substantial is greater than 100 cases per 100,000. And the percent positivity is another number that you've heard mentioned in the call to the public and likely in virtually any news station that you're listening to. So if that's greater than 10%, that's substantial community spread. And then COVID-like illness, and this really gets to the hospitalization and capacity of the healthcare system to respond to COVID and other diseases, if that's greater than 10%, we've got a red indicator. The yellow or the moderate would be 10 to 100 cases per 100,000, 5 to 10% positivity, and 5 to 10% COVID-like illness. And then to be in the green would be less than 10 cases per 100,000, positivity rate under 5%, COVID-like illness under 5%. And these are over a two-week average. So what we know is that we don't have complete data sets. One of the things that Dr. Sun and Shine mentioned that was really important is that she has confidence in the two-week data indicators because they're complete by the time we get to that point. So we could look at what today's numbers are, and those are going to shift and change because we have lagging data that's coming in. So when we're looking at two-week indicators, it's a pretty good signal in terms of where we are and a basis from which decisions can be made. The other important point here, and there's been some confusion, and we'll get to it at the end, I don't have a slide for it, but I know that people have seen it, is that the recommendation from the Arizona Department of Health Services is that to move from red, where all of Maricopa County is at the present time, to yellow requires having a positivity rate of seven, of less than 7% for two consecutive weeks. That's different than what some others have decided, and it's different than what the doctors who called early recommended where they're at 5%. That's the green metric. But why I think it's significant is what the Arizona Department of Health Services has done is created an opportunity for us to not wait to go from all online to all in person, but to really have a thoughtful transitional period, which is what the yellow represents. I've had some people ask, well, we didn't get a hybrid option before. Just a reminder, we had hybrid in their July 7th presentation. We took it off the table largely because we couldn't stand up a hybrid option with full return at the same time. But what we have from the state in terms of the recommendation is that that's the intermediate step before you get to full return when we're looking at what the data metrics allow. So the additional criteria, if you're at the green, the Arizona Department of Health Services indicates full return. We're at community spread that's known to minimal, that we want to maintain, you know, hand and hygiene, respiratory etiquette, enhanced cleaning, proper ventilation, monitor absenteeism. They did not check the cloth face coverings, and I only call that out here because in the governor's executive order, there's a reference to when the Department of Health Services says we no longer have to have face coverings, which may or may not be at the same time as we're in the green. And so I was surprised that box wasn't checked because there's a specific reference to the health, public health experts making that determination about when we can stop wearing cloth face coverings. In the minimal to moderate, the hybrid range, there are a whole lot of boxes checked there, including closing communal spaces. Think large gathering spaces, auditoriums, or even cafeteria unless you've provided some other physical distancing components. Field trips and large gatherings canceled. So in hybrid, there are a lot of other restrictions, but it allows us to have some step into a return to learn in person. And then we are actually living in the red area as it, since last week, anyway. So the flowchart here, safely returning to in-person instruction, that's again a part of what's on the Arizona Department of Health Services website, really does help us answer the question of when we can move from red to yellow and when we can move from yellow to green. And it's pretty clear, I mean, there are some shades of gray in terms of how we would interpret certain things, but to me, it provides an actionable metric for which we can plan in Scottsdale. For people who haven't seen the three metrics, this is Maricopa County data specifically. And this will get updated every Thursday, and we can then track what's happening in the county. And then Maricopa County is also providing data at the district level, the city level, and the zip code level. So in addition to looking at what's happening in the county in the aggregate, we can also see what's happening more specifically in Scottsdale Unified School District. You can see that the way that the benchmark, number one, the cases per 100,000 is measured, there were two different options. One is decline over two weeks, and the other is less than 100 cases per 100,000. Maricopa County is above the 100 cases per 100,000, so if that were a standalone indicator, we would be in the red. But because it's an either/or, we've met the decline in cases over a two-week period. And in fact, the trend data has been moving in a positive direction, and I think that's an important note, and I hope that that continues because that's critical to being able to return to learn in person. The second metric, two consecutive weeks with percent positivity below 7%, we're at 10, we were at 10.9% when this data was provided. We know there's a lag in the data. It's been moving in the right direction. We hope it continues to move in the right direction. But this is the reason why Maricopa County is in the red and remains in the red. For Scottsdale Unified, we also are in the red on this category. So what's misleading is when you go to the district-specific data, it shows that Scottsdale Unified is in the yellow. And that's because our positivity rate is between the 5 and 10%, but we have not met the less than 7% for two consecutive weeks based on current data. So if I was going to add another color, I would say orange because we're close. One week we were at 6.9%, but the other we were at eight or nine. So it's close, but we're not there in terms of this metric even within the district boundaries. And then the third one is the consecutive weeks with hospital visits for COVID-like illness in the region below 10%. And those numbers have been coming down pretty consistently. I've heard from ER doctors who have said, you know, we were full and concerned. We're in a much better position now. It's safer to return. So looking at all three metrics in their entirety is an important part of the conversation because taking one by itself may not paint the full picture. And what we said back in July, which now seems like a very long time ago, is that we didn't want to be the ones making the decision about when it's safe to return. We actually need to rely on our public health experts, and I believe that we have good guidance here from ADHS. You can argue about good versus perfect. I don't know that anyone has the ability to be able to say that except for when they do their doctoral dissertations five years from now and they're analyzing the pandemic. So with that, we've kind of looked at what the Department of Health Services has required. Maricopa County, the thing that they identified differently relates to, which indicator is it here? The, I have to go back and look at it now. So the other thing that Maricopa County Department of Public Health mentioned to the superintendents is that not all of your students live within the boundaries of your city. So you need to look at the zip codes where they live. Not all of your staff live there. And so it wasn't just pick one, pick the county metric or pick your school district. Look at all the data to make an informed decision because, and in our case, we do have some data that we looked at in terms of where our students are coming from and where our staff are coming from that look a little bit different than the county picture. And so I think that's important to discuss. From a leadership perspective, we have continually said that we are prioritizing health, safety, and well-being of our students and staff. That's our top priority. And we recognize the importance of resuming in-person learning when it's safe to do so. And you heard the stories, the frustration of parents when the technology doesn't work. For our youngest learners, this is really challenging. Many people struggle with distance learning. And you heard people who are having and finding success in the enhanced distance learning environment. This really does become a challenge for how do we do a both-and? Open safely, recognizing that there are health challenges, but there are also health risks associated with not opening, and finding that right balance is, I think, our challenge. And that's why, for me, the biggest part of our conversation is how does the yellow look for Scottsdale Unified School District? Because we know we are on the front end. If you look at the county data, the Scottsdale, Fountain Hills, Cave Creek show yellow. Some of our neighbors, Paradise Valley, and some of the neighbors to the south are red. We're in a place where if the trends continue, we may be able to move from red to yellow more quickly than some others. So the committee discussed all of these things. We talked about, once we've achieved the metrics, having a two-week lead time then to say, okay, we are prepared to make that move. And so we can communicate to our parents, what will it look like? What can we expect? What's the transportation? Because we're not likely to be able to move from red to green. So it's not like we return to school how it used to be. We're going to move to some type of hybrid format or a potential phased-in approach. We need to be able to notify parents of what that will look like. The hybrid options could look different between elementary, middle, and high school, and we've got committees that are convening to discuss this and have good teacher representation. Thanks to Dr. Garrett and her team for coordinating those. They're meeting two times a week with some sense of urgency because we recognize that where the numbers are, it's possible that we can stand up some level of in-person instruction by September 8th if, the way that they're moving at the present time. And I note here that, as we've heard, younger people appear to get COVID less frequently and with less severity. Doesn't mean that there's no risk, but it seems to be more promising. And we also know there are bigger challenges with K12. Maybe there's a way that we start with our younger learners and then build from there. But there's also a lot to be said for stepping into this so that we can learn from what happens and not be in a position like Georgia where if you turn the faucet all the way on and then you get a huge spike in cases and we have to go all back to online, that's just as disruptive. So trying to figure out what's the right balance as we move forward. There were concerns expressed by the committee members about mask-wearing compliance. We heard those tonight in the call to the public. And desire for clarity around metrics that may trigger return to learning in a virtual environment. And those are really, again, community indicators. It could also be based on an outbreak in a particular school. So after considering all of those factors, and much more, I'm moving through this relatively quickly, by consensus, the committee recommended that we adopt Arizona Department of Public Health's recommended metrics for safely returning to in-person learning. We did not recommend making any changes to those metrics. So the next steps, we've got a Phase II subcommittee or subcommittees meeting to talk about hybrid options and enhanced distance learning extended. And the reason why EDL extended is here is we still have to account for what happens when a student is positive for COVID or a family member of a student is and they're required to miss 14 days. How are we going to ensure that we're providing continuity in their learning experience? And we also knew that there were some families that selected EDL with a desire to return, but who, depending on when that date was, might still have health considerations that would cause them to be concerned. And we said that we would look for options to be able to meet those learning needs as well. The, we've seen the first cut of the data, August 14th, from the Maricopa County Department of Public Health. We'll see that on a weekly basis, and that will be very useful for us as we're doing our planning. We are monitoring what other school districts in Arizona and around the country are doing that have reopened. And we've seen some of that with some concerns about how quickly you reopen. And in other cases, I think a more measured approach has shown the potential for being successful. We have in Arizona some districts that chose to reopen this week, and the jury is still out. One chose to reopen and has canceled classes for two days. Another chose to reopen, and students have come to school, but it would take a couple of weeks to know whether or not there's any spread of COVID as a result of that opening. And so we'll be the beneficiaries of actually being able to watch what others have done. Within the North Valley, there are different approaches, similar in large part. I mean, basically, people are following the ADHS guidelines, but some are more restrictive than others in terms of how they're implementing it. And in one case, there's a district that had chosen to close until October, but the recommendation is to use the metrics. And if they're able to open before the end of their fall break, they would consider doing so based on the data. So I think you're going to see more conversations trying to be responsive to the needs of our families and the needs of our students because this really is about how to ensure they're getting the educational services that they need in a safe environment. The mitigation strategies are critical. It's another reason why the hybrid, when you're thinking about it district-wide, is really critical. The Operations and Logistics Committee noted in the return-to-learn plan that if we have all of our students on campus, we cannot provide the physical distancing requirements of CDC at six feet per student in our classrooms. We don't have enough physical space, and we don't have enough teachers in a full-return model. But if you cut the number of students in half that are on a campus any particular day, we can get a lot closer to meeting those CDC guidelines. We've got the hand washing, the hand sanitation, directional arrows, you know, the spacing reminders, a lot of other things that we can put in place that are part of the mitigation strategies. But it's that physical distancing that becomes the challenge when you have a full return. And that's why the yellow is the area that I think is most important for us to flesh out in more detail. The final piece on the talking point here is, is I've been talking with for weeks anybody who will talk with me about how we can get testing on our campuses and in our communities so that we can have more confidence and more certainty with respect to who's coming into our campuses, both students and staff, particularly concerned about those who are asymptomatic. They talk about super-spreaders, the 10% that are responsible for 70% of COVID cases. We don't know who they are. And so if we have a good testing protocol and we have a good response rate on that testing protocol, it will help build the confidence of people as we return to learn in person. I had a nice conversation with a person from Honor Health. There's a potential that we could work with our partners to have a testing blitz at some point here in Scottsdale, maybe in two places, South Scottsdale and North Scottsdale, so that before we have any large numbers of students and staff return, we might be able to do something, you know, that Thursday before the Monday with a 24 to 48-hour testing turnaround time. And I have a call with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Arizona coming up tomorrow or on Thursday. I've talked with researchers out of USC with some innovative strategies. There are, anywhere we can find the potential for standing up testing opportunities in our community to ensure and enhance confidence of families returning to learn in person, we want to be able to do that. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions and talk about any of the details here.
All right. Dr. Menzel, thank you for your analysis and for explaining and breaking down the data and for providing a recommendation. So I'm going to open it up to the governing board members who would like to comment or have a question for Dr. Menzel and what you just learned.
I can't believe that no one is going to comment. All right. Board Member Greenberg.
It's a little strange, but Dr. Menzel, thank you very much, and thank you to our board members who serve on the subcommittee and everyone else, teachers, staff. A lot was said tonight by our community members, and a lot has been said in emails to us and on Let's Talk. And I really appreciate all the input and the time that parents have taken to send in their comments and queries to us. I am very personally aware of how difficult this situation is. I do not have children in the district, but financially, I'm very aware of the effects that this has had on businesses, on my friends, on our business, my own business. We do a lot of work with public schools, and it would certainly benefit me for every single public school in the United States to reopen tomorrow and for every parent to shove a tuba in their child's hand and get into show choir and choir and start performing. Believe me, that would be significant to our business, but that wouldn't make health and safety sense scientifically. And ultimately, as Dr. Menzel pointed out, our top priority always has to be the health and safety of our students and our staff and our community generally because we care about the fact that, you know, grandparents serve generally, used to, serve as about 40% of daycare and after-school care for our students all across the nation. That is a very at-risk group of individuals, so that has caused even more economic issues with families having to find ways of watching their children, sometimes some people quitting their jobs. It is very tough. I have friends who have been waiting for months to get their unemployment checks. It is not a fun situation for anybody. I also have taken many courses online. In fact, for the past three weeks, I've been taking courses online, and I know it is very easy to get distracted, even as a 26-year-old. That's what it is. So certainly for young children whose parents need to sit with them for the day, I get it. I fully understand. I couldn't imagine. I understand it, but I can't imagine how difficult it must be, especially if you're a single parent with multiple children. If you come from, depending on your socioeconomic status, the resources that you have could be very limited. So I appreciate that, and I really empathize with that. I do think that our district is doing everything it is supposed to do in following the guidance and the rules set out by the governor. I think it is unfortunate still that so much has been put on the lowest tier of people, the school districts and the civil servants in them, because ultimately, at the end of the day, these are statewide and national health concerns. And different states have come up with extremely different metrics on this, and we don't know what the effects of that will be. New York requires one simple metric, under 5% of positivity rates. That would be us in the green zone here in Arizona, but that isn't what we've been recommended for even partial reopening. So, you know, I don't know if there are going to be any outbreaks in Queen Creek. My genuine hope is that there are not. I don't want people to be, you know, to get sick, and I'm hopeful that in two weeks there won't be, but we just don't know. And I think that the best thing for us to do is to follow these metrics and to follow them by the zip code and county breakdown as recommended by the county as opposed to the district breakdown because unfortunately, I don't believe the public is privy to this or that it wasn't in our board book. But, you know, when you break it down by zip code, SUSD starts to look a little differently, especially when you consider that many of our teachers and students come from outside of our boundaries, that we are an open enrollment district. So, you know, there's a lot. We have bus drivers, we have staff workers, we have teachers, the children's lives. You know, somebody brought up the topic, a caller brought up the topic of school shootings. That's a very tragic topic. But at the same time, with those, we've spent over $1 million refurbishing our front offices. We've implemented closed-open gateways. We've done so many, and schools across the nation have done so much to protect our students from that. And in this case, the threat is very different, but it's no less a threat to our students' health and our staff's health. And I don't know, and perhaps you can answer this, and I can close my comment with this question, but we did have questions about thermometers. We did have questions about testing and mask enforcement. We've discussed some of those at prior meetings. We still have questions about what happens if a student becomes ill. I know that in the reopening guidelines set by Department of Health Services that we have to work with our county health department to determine how to react to that if it's an individualized case or if there's a greater outbreak. What do we know? How many staff members at this time or where we'd be serving, how many staff members will be coming back to the district if we were to reopen September 8th or follow, at least follow the guidelines if for some, you know, something changes and we actually have to extend that longer? Do we know how many of our staff are committed to returning at that time, or will we find that out? Granted, Arizona has a 2,000 teacher shortage, so it's not exactly easy to replace these individuals if they do not feel comfortable showing up.
We have not specifically asked our staff that question. We did it in reverse. We asked our staff who had medical concerns, whether personally or within their family, and prioritize putting those in Scottsdale Online so that when we were moving from enhanced distance learning to a return to in-person instruction, we could prioritize those that had health concerns and put them in Scottsdale Online. The assumption would be then that those who remained in enhanced distance learning full return would be prepared to return when it was deemed safe to do so. So it's important to have those conversations, but until we had the board adopt the metrics, it seemed a little premature to ask a question. And quite frankly, part of our charge here is that we exist to educate our students. And so our, from an administrative perspective, we want to make sure the learning environment is safe as possible. A lot of what I've heard about class sizes, for example, gets mitigated in a hybrid environment because that was a big concern for teachers. We know that we've had to add more staff in order to address the needs in Scottsdale Online plus in enhanced distance learning. And so those are other things that we need to prepare for. It's part of why that two-week transition time is also important to make sure that it's set up, that we can provide the assurances that staff need to know that it's safe to return. We also have other staff that are working every day in our schools to stand up the EDL camps and the two learning labs at the high schools. So we're learning from those experiences, and we're also learning that sometimes those staff go home not feeling well or they've got anxiety. So the ability to staff it consistently is a concern because we expect that we'll see some of this. And so having an adequate subpool to be able to provide support when we return to learn in person is a concern that's been expressed and one that even watching what's happening in our EDL camps is one that we'll need to be ready to address when we begin the process of in-person instruction.
Right. I appreciate that because, you know, I respect parents' right to choose, especially for reopening in a hybrid or full model, to send their children to school or not to. But the other side of that coin is, of course, as we've seen with other school districts, the right to choose of employees whether to work or not. I mean, we live in a country that does not force people to work. Well, that's not entirely true, but in this specific case, we do not force people to work. We can't. We don't have that authority. So if teachers, if a large cohort of teachers did not feel safe and we returned prematurely, it's wonderful to have children wanting to come. And I fully agree, in-person learning, especially at this age group, is the best way to learn. But if we aren't also meeting that satisfaction from our staff, whether that's security, teachers, lunchroom, bus drivers, we cannot actually operate the district and serve that demand from parents and students. So, you know, the more that teachers are included in these talks, the better, I think.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Board Member Crabbett.
Okay. Oh, I'll be quick, quicker. Thank you for this presentation, and thank you to all of the parents and community members who called in this evening and who have emailed us over the last few days. I tried to respond to several of the emails, but haven't gotten to all of them, but I have read them, so thank you very much. With regard to return to learn, Phase II subcommittees began meeting on August 13th, considered hybrid options and EDL extended. Thank you for bringing that back. I think I just want to mention that EDL was the only option for some parents because if their students are taking more AP classes than those that are offered at Scottsdale Online, they had no other choice. So, you know, offering an extended choice for EDL would fit, you know, their needs to a much greater extent than Scottsdale Online ever would. So thank you. And I don't want to rush the process because we need to be thoughtful, but so the meetings began on August 13th. When When do you think we will have some program or discussion on a hybrid option? Or if we will have a discussion on a hybrid option?
Our commitment was to bring back that recommendation to the board September 1st.
Okay. So people should be looking for that in case our plans should change or the plans for their children should change.
Yes. We knew that on August 13th, when we started those conversations, that September 8th was still the earliest we could have a return to learn in person. We knew that we had to have something prepared to stand up and so that's our timeline.
Thank you. Board Member Pearlberg.
Okay. So I think that's an excellent question as far as our timeline and when we can expect information because many things hit us tonight, obviously with all the comments. And I'm going to say, as much as I was back in July, we were all very eager for the governor to give us a date we can open. And I was very, one board member, very eager to say that date or as soon as possible, right after that date, let's open. So we now know that's different and I question right now, I was disheartened to hear how many parents right now who are counting on that September 8th date that we said. And rightfully so, they should be. And I think that's striking me tonight going, whatever we say tonight, if we, I mean, I'm going to be honest, I'm right now questioning with 2020 hindsight, kind of like what we have now based on our conversations in late July. Our state has put out these metrics. I think overall, you can use them and interpret them how you need to do that. And as many districts have already shown, it's a flexible, actionable metric system that, right or wrong, allows districts to have a wide array of choices for their families. So I'm hesitant tonight to send any sort of unintentional message, we're going to open when this number is this. You know, I mean, because the metrics obviously come wrapped around in discussion and decision-making in them, there's no just clear switch, there's no off, on. While I personally am grateful for this date for these metrics and have no real issue using them as a framework, I am going to question tonight, what exactly do we need to approve tonight? Or can we just basically as a board give direction saying, let's draw those pictures of what in the yellow looks like? Let's take all of our families' experiences over the last couple of weeks. And I mean, obviously, I've been an advocate for one, we need to be asking our students and parents, are you thriving? Are you surviving? Or are you drowning? And we have to establish that for our students. And obviously, within this framework, we can do that in the yellow. But if we prematurely tonight send a message to our parents, this is when we open, this is when we won't open, that type of thing, I'm just concerned we'll be sitting here in a couple of weeks, kind of regretting giving our parents either false hope or a plan in their minds that then we let them down with. So that's my first comment, I think, for the evening.
Do you have any comments? Vice President Beckman?
Yeah, I just, I didn't know. I thought it was a question in there. I was waiting for you to respond if you wanted to respond or if it was a statement.
I would certainly accept feedback on that.
So I have a couple of thoughts. I think the community needs to hear that we're going to use data metrics in order to inform the decision. The governor gave governing boards the ability to consider and disregard the data. So Maricopa County is in the red. Some of the districts that opened are in the red, so they chose not to follow the metrics established by public health officials. I have concern about not following those metrics. I think there's a liability issue. So in my mind, I would like to be able to have a formalized agreement that will use the ADHS guidelines as the template to follow. To your point that there could be some level of interpretation in there, I think where there's not a level of interpretation is two consecutive weeks of below 7% positivity rate. The recommendation that is before the board tonight is to use the ADHS guidelines and I checked it out, the Maricopa differences, they want the cases to be under 100 per 100,000, not just two weeks of declining case rates was where the county differed from the state on the metrics. Again, we're going with the more liberal rather than the more restrictive interpretation, in part because we, and this is our conversation with the leadership team, think that there's an opportunity here for us to step our way back into a return to learn in person that's safe and we can do it on a sustained basis. The last thing that I want is to bring students back and three weeks later have to shut down again. And so it's finding that right balance. Until August 6th, the idea of being able to return to a district-wide hybrid wasn't on our radar. When they gave us the metrics and said, our recommendation from a public health perspective is that you return to a hybrid version of in-person learning, that changed the game for us in terms of how we shifted our thinking and considered what was possible. And so to me, I think if we can formalize the metrics, it allows us then to put in place, and the truth is, some of our parents that called in tonight are not going to be happy because they want a full return, full schedule, like it was before. And quite frankly, if we adopt the metrics, that's not going to happen until we're in the green and we won't be in the green by September 8th. We very well could be in the yellow by that point in time, given where the numbers are heading, but the data we get on Thursday is going to tell us how close we are to that number. So for me, I think that people on both sides, both the ones that want us to reopen and the ones that want us to really prioritize use of data and science, need us to identify what the metrics are because that gives them a place to at least point to as we make the decisions. Doesn't mean they're all going to be happy with it, but it does mean that they know what metrics we're using and it feels less arbitrary.
Vice President Beckman.
Okay, a couple of things. First, to Board Member Kravitz's point, I do think it's important for a lot of our community members to understand her point in that a lot of our students had no choice but to choose EDL regardless of their health circumstances, et cetera, because for instance, my daughter, their math science academy and some of those classes were not offered in Scottsdale Online. So they have to be in EDL regardless of how we felt about the public health. And so that's a very, very valid point. I want to thank our callers because listening to them was very impactful. It truly was. This is not easy and to listen to parents cry right now and to hear about children being upset when the very reason we're all here is to help them is very, very difficult. So to say this has been hard is an understatement, to say the least. It's been gut-wrenching for me as a board member and a parent with kids that are in our schools right now. My kids want to be back in school. They're hurting, but having said that, to what Dr. Menzel said, I can't imagine what it would do to their mental health if they were to return to the classroom that they missed so very much, only have to return to online learning shortly thereafter if we see an increased spread. So frankly, I think that would be devastating. I'm going to support a metric approach and data, et cetera, and I'm going to be hopeful that we can get our kids back in school as soon as possible, but we can do it safely for our students, our community, and our teachers and our staff.
I'm so glad the board stepped up and had real thoughtful, I know everybody, as Vice President Beckman has said, this has been more gut-wrenching and especially when you get the emails and you hear what everybody is going through and what these parents are going through and because also we have such a diversity of thought in this district. And so it makes it even that much more difficult because you have a desire to please everybody, but you realize that you can't. I appreciate the participation in the metric committee, so I want to thank everybody on that, that I'm sure you were going through exactly what that we have all been going through, what the cabinet's been going through for the past several months. I'm really appreciative of the data that the state has given and the way that the committee went through it and actually recognizing that we might be able to do something a little different than we originally had thought in going to that hybrid model. I'm supportive of the metrics as they stand out, as you have presented them. I do want to make sure what they are and we say them one more time because I think I understand them, but I want to make sure that everybody else does before we vote and that our public does. I also want to say that as much as we all would love the fact that if we open up or even if we go to a hybrid, there is that chance and we need to prepare ourselves mentally and prepare our children that we could go back to online. And we need, and as much as I understand it'd be devastating, we need to start to mentally preparing ourselves that it won't be devastating as, if you put it in perspective. It will just be that we have to be flexible, adaptable, and those are skills that will benefit all of us in the long run. And so I'd like to kind of have a change of mindset there when I hear that because there's a high probability at some point, or one school might have to shut down if for some reason there's some large, large outbreak. So there's no guarantees in this and we really need to look within ourselves, especially as parents, to be that foundation and that rock for our children because they do need security. And that security doesn't come with denial, it comes with honesty and with understanding that we will be okay. We get through this. We know we can. We've been through a lot and we will get through it together. So I am supportive. I'd just like for you to go through once again those three data points so that we do understand.
Sure. Thank you. So the metrics that have been identified relate to the number of cases per 100,000, the percent positivity and COVID-like illness. So in the red category, which represents substantial community spread, it's more than 100 cases per 100,000, it's more than 10% positivity rate and more than 10% COVID-like illness within the healthcare system. The moderate or the yellow area is 10 to 100 cases per 100,000, 5 to 10% positivity and 5 to 10% COVID-like illness. The minimal area where we're in the green, which would allow for a traditional return to learn, is less than 10 cases per 100,000, percent positivity rate less than 5%, and COVID-like illness less than 5%. We're actually, I think, in part of Scottsdale Unified in the green on the COVID-like illness, but for one week. These indicators and benchmarks have to be consistent for at least two weeks because you want to avoid statistical anomalies, you want to have some confidence in the data. And another point that I think is important, moving from red to green, you have to be under the 7% positivity rate for two consecutive weeks, but if that positivity rate creeps up to 8%, it doesn't put you back in the red. That's why you've got the 5 to 10 area. And the goal here is not to yo-yo back and forth between levels and that's why there's some spread, but there is a separate benchmark for moving from red to yellow in order to ensure that the rate of community spread is down to a level that's defensible. And I think that's the challenge here, but if we use these, I think we have the ability to step into a return to learn that, particularly in person, that could help meet the needs of our kids and put us on a path. And the other part is, if the community keeps doing what it's doing and the numbers keep going down, we can accelerate the rate to which we return to full return, which is what we all want. When you talk to teachers, you talk to people in the school system, the real desire is to be back in person. So I think there's a narrative out there that people don't want to return. That's not true. They want to return and ensure that it's safe to return. People got into the public education business to be with kids, not to watch them on a screen.
So this question was going to be on September 8th. That was September 1. Is one year will be making the decision of whether return based on a sale or basically the application of such a percentage above or?
It's below 7%. So below.
Allison, is your microphone on?
Yes, thank you. I apologize.
So we have to be below 7% positivity rate for two consecutive weeks. I'm assuming that those other two indicators, the cases and the COVID-like illness continue their positive trend. The one, we're in the red, even within our school district metrics, is still we've not had two consecutive weeks of below 7%. If this Thursday, we're at 5% positivity rate and we were at 6.9% last week, that would put us solidly in the yellow. What we said as a committee is that we need two weeks for transition in order to notify parents what we're going to do. We haven't fully fleshed out what that phased-in approach might look like or the hybrid. The community's working fast because they know September 8th is coming quickly. I do have to appreciate Dr. Guerin and her committee's creativity for some language that's easy to remember. So safe, simple, and scalable is how we're thinking about moving into a hybrid because there's, the more complexity you add to it, the more frustration you'll have and more opportunities for failure. So safe, simple, and scalable provides some framework for how they're thinking about the hybrid and phased-in approach and we'll be continuing to do our work quickly with an eye towards what would we stand up on September 8th and then what can we build out from there in this yellow area on our way to green.
So what I heard was on September 1, besides being able to understand maybe that hybrid, we would not, and let's say on September 1, the metrics are all in the yellow with the below 7%, which means, but because you have the caveat, we would not be starting a full in-class return with, we need a two-week period to get prepared. So on September 8th, we most likely would not be having everybody returning, we would be doing a hybrid model of returning on September 8th. Is that what I'm hearing?
So yeah, I would be completely surprised, I'm just looking at the calendar, I would be completely surprised if we could have a full return on September 8th. I just don't see us getting into, I don't think you get two weeks of all green in that time period. I think that there's a significant likelihood that we can do some version of the hybrid on September 8th. That's what we're working toward. I want to be prepared to, and it's probably not going to be at all levels. And we've talked about phasing in with those in the greatest need, so maybe a K2 start. And we're not the only district, the others in North Valley having the same conversations. Start with the youngest learners, K2, talk about our special education students. Those have been some of the most heartbreaking stories that I've heard about and there's no question that there's a need there. So figuring out how we address that, maybe our English language learners. So those are the conversations we're having. What can we stand up that addresses the greatest need first, but then with a very clear plan for how do we begin to tier that as we learn more? And we're learning from our EDL camps now. We're going to continue to learn from other districts that are doing it so that we can be, as we've said before, nimble and flexible, using data to drive and inform our decisions, but with a clear commitment to safety and in-person return as quickly as we can.
We want to make sure our public hears that. All right. Any more discussion? Vice President Beckman?
I just, I want to just touch on something you said, Dr. Menzel, because I think the night is getting long, but we need to reinforce something. First of all, thank you to leadership and staff. I mean, I don't know if our public knows this, but this district has been working 24/7 since March to kind of reinvent education as we know it. So truly, thank you. And then to touch on something you said as well about our teachers, you know, our educators are hurting as well. They really are. Every single one of them wants to be back in the classroom with their kids. And I talked to a few of them, one in particular that walked in this week to an empty classroom and was in tears because it was not, like you said, what she was born to do. We know teaching is a calling, we know why they're here, and right now, they're having to do it with their own kids, teach their own kids, and try and figure out how to teach our kids. So, you know, a big applause to them because once again, they've stepped up and I really appreciate it. So thank you all.
All right. Board Member Pearlberg.
Thank you. So.
So, so I'm going to attempt to be clear, I think. You know, I, I too have no problem with the state metrics. And again, I think I said this, I'm grateful that they did supply them to us because we were all very skeptical of what they would give us. Before I get into that though, I, I, something you had said, President Beckman, that when we talk about the rhetoric, the dialogues that we need moving forward, you're absolutely right and, and, you know, that those frameworks and those conversations we have to be aware of, but there's always the flip side of those, that rhetoric and, and those discussions. And in our committee meeting, that was brought up, a couple, a couple points of, you know, as we talk about teachers who we all know are working incredibly hard. I have some in my family trying to make all this work and they're heartbroken as everyone. But we do have to be careful when we talk about the choice of when we think it's safe because there are many, many staff members in SUSD right now who had no choice. They are essential workers. And so conversations around essential workers and we get to decide when it's safe, we have to be aware that there's sensitivity that, you know, is out there and frustrations that are out there. And we don't want to be oblivious to them as well. Our families, we have parents who have no choice in their status as essential workers. So I, I just think for every, for every comment on, you know, our parents need to understand that, I agree with you. What you said, our parents do need to understand, they also need to understand if they come back in person, we are going to have positive tests. And that was discussed in the committee as well. And so to really be able to talk intelligently about what in-person looks like and be open, honest, but we also need to recognize our parents still, many of our parents and our students and our staff still want that. And so to just have a conversation of we all want to go back when it's safe without defining that very well, that, I mean, we see tonight, we saw in public comment where we stand because of that. And so again, I'm, I'm going to say I'm supportive of these metrics, but the idea that tonight we're going to, again, kind of put, draw some lines for our community, but it's not clear to them what it looks like at all. I mean, I'd be much more comfortable tonight saying, yes, we're using this as a framework and come September 1st, we have to define what yellow looks like and red looks like, and then we approve that. I'd be much more comfortable doing that. But I understand. If I'm the only one with that issue, that's, that's how that is. But hearing tonight, just the, just the anxiety and anticipation of our community members, I mean, I've been sitting here for a couple of weeks wondering why on earth are EDL camps not full and overflowing, waitlist? I couldn't figure it out. Tonight, I think I got a reason why because everyone's thinking I've just got to get to September 8th. And so I, I just want to, I guess I just don't want to repeat that and two weeks. So that's where I sat tonight. But I, again, appreciate all the hard work. I appreciate these metrics and I always got to remember that for every argument, there's a flip side to that coin. So appreciate it.
Board Member Greenberg?
Thank you. And I, I would agree. I mean, I think it is a little puzzling and Dr. Menzel and I had a brief email exchange from an email we had received from a member of the public about the fact that they have to, they cannot work from home and that they've had to hire a babysitter. And I mean, I was a little puzzled because I kind of thought, well, wait a second, this is specifically the type of individual who would need a place for their child to go. And I don't know if that's because they're messaging herself or as Board Member Pearlberg has said, is it because families are saying, well, we don't want to do that until September 8th when they can all come back in person? So I, I, it's, I don't know if, if our district has any information on that, but it, it is puzzling. And for community members watching, please know that these camps do have availability and, and we also are monitoring on a routine basis that need. So they might expand if there is more need. You know, obviously for parents with children who have special needs, it's a top priority for us. English language learners, top priority for us. Students who cannot be safe at home during the day, top priority for us. So, you know, please, please do come through. But I did want to clarify Board Member Pearlberg's comment. So is it, is it a concern that our definition of what is yellow and what is green is not clear? Or is it a concern that when we do get to yellow, it is not clear what we will be doing? Or is it both? Just so I can understand. Because it seems, I can't tell, I, I'm having difficulty understanding, are you saying that, that you're concerned the public doesn't understand what it means to be in the yellow itself? Or that the public doesn't understand what that will look like in practical terms for their students coming back to campus?
Would you like to respond?
Sure. I'm not sure I fully understand the question, but obviously tonight, we heard very clear, and we've been hearing for weeks from our parents, they, they want understanding what to expect for their children's education. They want to be heard on what they are personally experiencing and living, and their student is experiencing and living through right now. And especially at our hearing tonight and realizing when we, we drew that date in people's minds, I just, I feel like, yeah, we've just added another layer of confusion tonight by saying, we're embracing these metrics. And no, I don't think our general community is going to, you know, follow along, well, you know, what's green mean, what's yellow mean, what does red mean? But especially, what does it mean for my student? What does it mean for my schedule? What does it mean for, you know, my, our lives? And to add to the confusion tonight to a degree, even though, like I said, I'm happy to say, of course, we should be using these, this as a framework for our decisions, but tonight to, to make it seem as if we've made some decision and yet clearly no, we don't know what our district looks like in the yellow. And we can't say to the students and the parents tonight who are begging to be back in person. I mean, we're, we're giving a lot of the other communities and their choice a discussion, but we're not giving that community at all any sort of real discussion or answer tonight. So I guess I just have hesitations in that. I think we all heard and respected the idea of choice. There is no one-size-fits-all solution. And we have been asking for, you know, a while to, I mean, the obvious question of what is happening to some of our students who cannot learn online? And how are we finding them? How are we answering their, you know, issues? And what are we going to do? And I guess, yeah, I, I guess that's my concern tonight.
So are you, I, I'm kind of hearing too, I, I felt I heard what we were doing. And that was, is it the chance, if, if, if we adopt these metrics, I want to make sure, we will be looking on September 1 to look at those metrics to see what we're doing on September 8th. The chance that we are going to be opening up full online on September 8th?
Full return.
Full return, excuse me, for every student is very slim, given the metrics as of today. But there is the possibility that we could at certain either levels or schools, open up hybrid models. So that to me appears fairly clear. And to me, the metrics, the only component of the metrics or variable of the metrics that doesn't seem to be clear is what zip codes we're going to be using within that metric to figure out the 7%. But we will have that because, and we will have to be consistent with that, I assume. So to me, I see very clear, these are the metrics, these are the variables, this is the number that we'll come up with, and that will determine what we do. The only component we don't know is that hybrid model component. Because it appears that, given the data today, we're going to be doing some type of hybrid. And hopeful, and it was mentioned that we really need two weeks to get ready for it. So might be able to open up maybe a hybrid on the 8th, but if, on September 1, two weeks from that date is not until, you know, the following week of that. So to me, I am giving, I feel we are giving our community information. But so you'll have to explain if, if I'm hearing it incorrectly.
So I, I think you're both right in different ways. So yes, we're giving information. We may not be giving people the concrete information to say, okay, what's it going to look like for my child on September 8th or September 14th or the 21st? Because that is still being finalized. And, and it's where I don't want to speculate on some of the, because it's not, it, it's still in process in terms of what those options might look like. And in particular, how do you balance what we're asking our teachers to do when we make that shift in a hybrid environment? And I really want to honor teacher voice as a part of how that looks. I, I think we're getting good ideas at the committee level, but it takes some time to flesh it out. I think it is fair to say, we're not at a place to say full return is, is the option on September 8th. So I think we are being very clear, unless there was a miracle with the data. But just watching UNC open a week and shut down, if you go to the Midwest, there are a lot of colleges that are now moving back to online again because of student behavior. I happen to be at Desert Ridge. I'm watching teenagers who are not physically distancing and mask-wearing is either chin strap or optional. They may have them with them so that when they walk in a store, they can put it on. How our students choose to behave? And I get reports all the time, we're in a community where everybody's got a cell phone camera, they take pictures, they let us know when our students aren't physically distancing or wearing masks, when our staff aren't wearing masks. We get those reports all the time. So the concerns that are expressed about compliance with our expectations to reduce the potential spread of COVID, I want nothing more than for our kids to be back in school. I want that to be very clear to everybody who's watching and listening. It is so important for our kids to be back. But if we come back and we have a spike in COVID cases and we have to shut down because we did it too quickly without really thinking through how to move into it, that is worse to me than taking the time to do it right. And that's, that's where I think we are. I want to be back. I think it's really important. I understand that there's always a, a risk-reward calculus that gets done. We're not going to eliminate all risk. We're going to work to mitigate the risk. And for those who really can't accept the risk when we do that balancing, then there is the full online option. We, we know that that's going to be a choice parents have to make. But we've still seen too many indicators in other places that have gone full throttle so quickly that they've had to shut down. That's what, what I'm hoping that we can avoid by being very deliberate in our approach. That's why I don't want to, I don't want to rush the baking of what the yellow looks like. I want to be very clear. I want to be in green. We're not in green yet. We're going to put in, and plan a place so that we can begin this process, grow and learn and hopefully remain open and get to green as quickly as possible.
Board, Board Member Greenberg?
I appreciate that. I appreciate both the board members' comments because I, I do understand very clearly that for parents who, and students who want to return, it can be frustrating not to hear what that specific plan is. And it can be confusing to have been told, you know, we were going to reopen September 8th. But that may or may not happen either in full, it'd be great if we got to green or in hybrid because of the circumstances in our, in our community and in our county. Obviously, the September 8th date was set at a time when the governor had, was using hard dates in August 17th, yesterday was his original hard date. But he has ended that now with his change in executive order 202051 with these metrics. And we are free to disregard these metrics. I understand, you know, from the, from the parent comments, one line of, of argument being that, well, you know, we can't trust the data, we should just, you know, reopen, it's all manipulated. That, that may or may not be true. The fact of the matter is, is that we, you know, we are school board members and we educate. That is what our staff and teachers do. We're not epidemiologists. And so, you know, we don't have any ability to test this data independently. We don't have that expertise. And we have to be able to rely on something. And the other line of, you know, that it's choice, it is, of course. You know, we want parents to choose SUSD. We want parents to feel safe and students to feel safe coming to SUSD, whether there's a pandemic or not. But the reason why those other voices are important is because if we can't provide the labor necessary for them to safely be here, whether that's, you know, front desk workers, cafeteria workers, bus drivers, all the staff, maintenance, everyone who makes our buildings function and safe, it's very difficult to reopen, whether you want to come or not. If we don't have the teachers to come in, it's very difficult. And so in many ways, I feel, and I could be wrong, and that's why I brought up the question about teachers, is that I think that teachers want to return when it's safe to do so as well. They want to be teaching in person. I know how difficult it is. Or Board Vice President Beckman made a really great point. This is, this just isn't what teachers want to be doing. But they also want to be safe and they have health concerns. So if we don't have the staff buy-in, we can't reopen. And I think that these metrics, for, for community members who are curious, in my personal view, I think these metrics provide a mutual way of developing that, of developing that buy-in from all aspects and all concerned parties to attend schools. I think if we just ignore the metrics and reopen, you know, next week, or we reopen, you know, September 8th without any regard to what's going on in our local area, I think we could end up in a real serious problem where, you know, Queen Creek, again, I don't want them to experience anything, but they still lost, what, 80 teachers, if not more? I mean, that's a strain on the system. We're already, as, you know, every year, we're complaining about how class sizes in Arizona have increased and how there are too many students per teacher. Imagine losing 80 and not being able to replace them. Imagine being J.O. Colms and, and staff just doesn't feel safe to, to go into work yet. And they're completely closed. It's not even that they have online learning, they have no learning. So buy-in from all community members is really key. And I, I want people, I, if there are staff members, enough staff members with these metrics, enough students saying, you know, we want to come and work in person, that's great, fantastic, good time to do the hybrid model and we can build on that. But I, I, my personal concern is with, with individuals, and I understand the frustration again, who, who just want us to reopen tomorrow. I, I think that's really, I think that's a real risk that even if we say, stand here tonight and say we're reopening, it, it just wouldn't happen and understandably so. So, I mean, that, that's my personal view on this. I think we, we have established pretty good metrics on the green, the yellow, the red. We're following what the Arizona Department of Health Services has put out. They are the experts on this issue. The CDC are the experts on this issue. We are following their guidance and we are following it to the T. When we hit that yellow marks in all three categories or even green marks, we're, we're going to have projects that our committees are working on right now and have been working on already for a few days, if not a couple of weeks now, that are going to be put in place and it's going to, we're going to try and make it as smooth a transition as possible. But, you know, at all times, our health and safety is really key. And I do not want to be one of those districts or schools or communities that closes and reopens. And I know parents have choice. I know that they can leave SUSD and go to private schools, that, that's, if that's what they want to do, that's fantastic. That is your choice, that's your prerogative. I have no qualms with that. Not everybody can do that. We have a lot of students who can't. So, you know, we have to be mindful, as Dr. Menzel's pointed out, that, you know, we have 22 and a half thousand students. It's not just students who want to return, it's students with health issues, students who live with families with health issues, staff. There's a lot to it. So I, I really appreciate the comments and I, I've had plenty of breakdowns, I'm not afraid to admit it, over these, these past few months, it's been very tough. In my own world, I can't imagine again how tough it must be with kids who want to return, how difficult it is not socializing, how difficult it is not learning in a good environment. But I, I am pretty supportive of these metrics and I think that they're as clear as we can be at this time.
Thank you. Vice President Beckman?
Thank you for your comments. I, I'm probably going to be repetitive as far as my question, but I think it's important. I knew, we all knew, I think this was going to be a long night. And if we can make it as clear as possible for our community members, if I have a question, I, I think probably they would do. So regarding the dates, it's clear to me, we're working in the yellow, which is more of that moderate, hitting those three categories, trying to be there for two weeks, making sure that we've been there for two weeks, and then it will be two weeks beyond that that we start phasing in a hybrid. So Board President Beckman, you, and if I'm incorrect, please correct me. You mentioned September 1st. I want to be clear, the reason we're talking about September 1st is because that's the next board meeting. So the next board meeting is September 1st where we'd be revisiting the metrics and saying, where are we? Are we in the yellow? Have we been there for two weeks? So my first question is, what if we've been there for a week? for a week? So, what if we've been there for a week? How are we addressing that? Do we say, okay, that week counts as part of the two weeks, which it should, because our community members are going to expect it to? And now, we go to September 8th at that point, or right around there. So, first of all, just trying to establish how this would go. So, two weeks from now is September 1st, and we're not all there yet. So, we're just throwing that out there, because that's the next board meeting. And that's when we're going to be looking at them. But we're going to be visiting those metrics, not as new, not the two-week threshold of starting doesn't start September 1st. It will take into, it'll include what has happened in the past at that point, right? So, it will be two weeks, all in the yellow, in those three categories. And then, two weeks from there, we begin a hybrid, because that gives us time to figure it out, and, you know, perfect it, or whatever, right?
So, the data clocks started last Thursday, or Friday, when we got the Maricopa County data. We'll have two weeks' worth of data on the 20th. We'll have three weeks' worth of data on the 27th. September 3rd or 4th, whatever that next Thursday is, we're going to have a month's worth of data.
Not all in the yellow, meaning not third category?
Well, it could be.
Yeah.
It, it, but this is, this is the thing. If the trends continue at the same rate, we could be all in the yellow, which then allows us to stand up some version of hybrid on September 8th. So, so that's what our team is working toward, with barring an anomaly that turns the data the other direction. We're working under the assumption that we're going to have two weeks' worth of data, two weeks before September 8th, so that we would be able to stand up some version of hybrid. That's not likely to be at all levels, you know, going half, you know, whatever that looks like. I think it's going to be a smaller focus, maybe K2, focused on our kids with the greatest need, something to start, and then build the other aspects out. Because if we're going to talk about it on September 1st, I think it really is important to be able to outline where we landed and why on those things, so parents understand and can plan. No hybrid is going to be optimal. Actually, nothing in a pandemic is optimal. That's part of our challenge. We don't get optimal choices. We get the best of bad choices. And that's what we're trying to cobble together on a, on our way towards getting to the other side of the pandemic. That's, that's the challenge. But I want people to understand, we're working with an assumption that the data's going to continue moving in a positive direction, and that we're standing up some version of hybrid in person September 8th.
So, how are we going to concisely and simply communicate what is discussed or decided upon tonight to our community? So, we're not, we don't have a million parents upset, misunderstanding, looking at different data, you know, sending emails. And I know it's going to happen anyway, but I'm just putting that challenge out there. How are we, if we have questions like this, are we going to get on it, I hope, tomorrow morning, in saying that this is the discussion, this is so that our community doesn't misunderstand what we're talking about?
And if I can jump on that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Board Member Pearlberg.
That's been my whole point along. This conversation, especially after listening to all our parents, the last thing I think we need is to somehow send out this message that we've got these triggers, and we know exactly what's going to happen on this trigger and that trigger, when we could, the six of us could sit here and debate when we're really in the yellow, or when we're really in the green. And our whole community could start coming at us, well, wait, you said in the green. And by my calculations, and by the numbers I see, we're in the green, by my zip codes, that, just the mere fact that we accept this is a conversation, not a flipping of switches. By acknowledging that tonight, and, and just, and saying, this is what we are looking at, this is where we're going as fast as we can, but everything's going to be a conversation, because tonight, we heard so many voices, and no, every, I think everyone's pretty much realized there's no perfect in this, and there's no happy. It's lesser of many, many evils. But if we, again, send a message where it's, but, but you said when it's this, and by my social media posts, it looks like it's this. I mean, once again, we're kind of pulling the rug out from our community. And, and yes, I do still feel obligated to be a voice for the family members, students, and staff, who, right now, I mean, I know the challenges. I know it's not everyone. But we have staff, we have teachers, and we have students, who would like to be in person right now. And it does seem very wrong. It was said tonight, and I agree with that comment. It seems to, wrong to just simply say, sorry, we're hearing everybody else's voice, yours, we just can't listen to right now. And I'm not saying there's a perfect answer for them. And I'm not saying, you know, we can make them happy right now. It's just a little hard for me tonight to kind of give this impression that, you know, don't worry, calm down, we're, we're going to have these little switches, and, and we'll get there, you know.
I hope it didn't come off that I was saying, just calm down and don't worry, because if that was, because that was not, I don't.
I just don't want to send that message tonight.
And I don't think that's the message sent. But I do think there is a black and white message here. We will be putting out, I assume, once a week, once we get the data. There are specific variables that will be calculated to come up with the data. That's factual. So, that's what we're voting on tonight, that we agree to that data. That will, that will show whether it's red, that our variables that we're using will be in the red, yellow, or green. We know when we're in the yellow, as long as we're below the 7%, then we are having that conversation around, how are we going to be opening up? So, there is some black and white here. Don't, am I, I mean, I'm hearing that.
Yes, but.
But then, it becomes the conversation.
So.
So, we are giving metrics to our community.
What we, what we haven't said is Scottsdale Unified versus Desert Canyon Elementary. If I look by zip code, and I look at 85255, I might see a different set of metrics than if I look at all of the zip codes that our kids are coming from, or Maricopa County. That becomes part of the problem, because if, where I live is a place where I should be able to be open, are we going to open some schools and not others? Or are we Scottsdale Unified, saying that we're in this together in terms of the metrics? That part might be in terms of what parents are hearing. And, and that's where it's the both and. It's looking at the zip codes that are feeding in. And I'm not making an argument that every zip code should be in, in the yellow. I think it has to be a majority of our zip codes where our students and staff are coming from in the yellow. And, and so, when you look at our district, you look at those zip codes, you look at where people are coming from. And I don't want to rely on just Maricopa County as a whole, because when you look at the Western Valley, if they're a hotspot, that shouldn't impact our ability to return to some form of in-person learning. I think that's the area of gray that I hear Board Member Pearlberg referencing, that can create the angst.
Well, and, and that sense in our parents going, you keep moving the goal line for us.
But we're not going to.
What do you mean? And, I mean, just, just right there, we already know that if we, we look at our zip codes in SUSD, or do we look at our zip codes of out-of-district students who come in? Do we look also at the staff? So, again.
I think we're going to define that, I can say.
I, and I.
That will be defined.
And I am so eager to have that conversation on September 1st. But tonight, this has been a valuable conversation as well. But that's.
So, I assume that those zip codes were part of the recommendation, that we knew what we were going to be. Or, or is tonight just that we are adopting this with the understanding that we will be determining those zip codes, of how you're going to determine the subject?
So, the recommendation.
Because we can't change it. Can't be ever-changing.
Bless you. The recommendation came from, from the committee, and that was before we saw the zip code data from Maricopa County Department of Public Health. So, the recommendation from the committee didn't include anything specifically about how we would use zip code information, because that came out after our August 10th meeting.
Okay. So, right now, the recommendation is for using Maricopa County? Or using SUSD district?
We're, we're using the ADHS recommendations, which allows for use of the county-specific data. So, the way the ADHS wrote it is, is to incorporate county-specific information. We just have more county information now than we had when we made the recommendation.
Okay. Okay. Now, I'm seeing where you're coming from. You were in that, you were in that committee, and that wasn't discussed. And I thought that that was part of the discussion, when it was decided what those variables were.
Not on those grounds.
I'm glad we got there. Thank you.
Vice President Beckman.
So, that makes perfect sense, that we had that broader, and now they've said, okay, within that, you can do your subsets that apply to your district. I get that. But my, my point earlier was, of course, we need to define. We need to say, this is what we are following absolutely along. It's defined. You can follow it too. So, we don't have all of these side conversations of people wondering why we're not looking at this, and that, and whatnot. So, my expectation is that will be, correct? Regardless.
So, and here's where I did not make a change to the recommendation on the fly, because I don't think that's good procedurally. So, I'm going to do some thinking out loud, which is maybe risky. But I would, I would argue that we should be looking at the zip code data from where our students are coming from. And, and while I'm interested in where our staff are coming from, I don't think that should be part of the metric for determining whether or not we're in the yellow. And, and the reason why is, we've made it very clear to our staff that if you're sick, COVID-like symptoms or concerns, stay home. And if you live in, in a, in a red area, we hope that you're taking proper precautions, you're wearing your mask, you're doing all the things necessary to protect yourself from potentially getting COVID. So, in my mind, while I'm, I'm very interested in, in the staff data for other reasons, I don't think it should be part of the decision-making process. But where our students come from, I think, may make a difference, because now we're talking about, we, we don't really know. I think we had this conversation about, if you see, you know, a group of kids behaving a certain way, not wearing masks, and that behavior then is putting everybody else at risk when they come to school, what, what recourse do we have? What's happening with, with students, we, we have less control over. So, if we understand more about the communities they're coming from, that can inform the decision. But, and this is where I haven't had enough time to think or talk about it. The, the metrics, some people want hard and fast benchmarks, but I don't know that there's anything magical between 5.1 and 4.9, right? And, and so, Maricopa County says, average the zip code data for that region to determine. That would, that's their recommendation. So, if you're going to use Maricopa County's recommendation, average the, the percentages from those zip codes that are coming into your district, to use that. I would feel comfortable using that as the metric, because it's the recommendation from Maricopa County Department of Public Health, and it's one that you could point to and say, okay, here's the zip codes. The ones that I sent to you represent 92% of our kids, because once it got less than 1% of the total zip codes, we, we stopped counting. But that's, I think, a threshold that's defensible. But, but again, that's not been vetted by anyone outside of the recommendation from Maricopa Department of Public Health.
Board Member Greenberg.
Okay. Well, let me, so, just so, the, not the recommendation you're making tonight, but what the committee will discuss, is whether to take these numbers and average them, to see how many are in yellow for two weeks. And as long as that, in theory, potentially, depending on what the committee decides, as long as that number, the average number of students come from a yellow district, yellow zone, for two weeks or more, that could be 50.01%, then we would classify SUSD as.
Meaning that.
True yellow, and then, and then plan on return to hybrid. Is that kind of the gist? Did I capture that?
Not just yellow, because it's actually less than 7%.
Right. Yeah. So, so to move.
Yellow goes all the way up to 10.
To move from red to get to the yellow, you've got to be under the 7% for two weeks.
7%. Okay.
Yep. So, that, that is an important distinction, because that's what's thrown a lot of people off. They see the yellow on the chart, but even, even as the SUSD metric, you know, as the district metric, that's misleading. And then, there's the footnote in the, in the county data that indicates using the zip codes and aggregating is, is better than just the district piece,
because they're not reporting zones.
Right.
Right. Yeah. Okay. Sorry. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Barbara Pearlberg. And I'll just end with, basically, I, obviously, I'm concerned about the devil in the details, clearly, for us here. That's, that's clear. And I think our conversation highlights what that will really be like for our community. I think my vote tonight, it's not so much that I think everybody needs to be back in campus right now, no matter what. It's not that I feel that. And it's not that I don't respect this, the data and the metrics, however you want to interpret them, all those a thousand ways. It's, to me, what we should be shifting more of a focus on, is rather than, when, when is, when are the, you know, switch is getting flipped, when's that happening? Instead, be truly looking at our students, their needs, what's happening in their learning right now, and identifying, I guess, I mean, I'd much rather be trying to identify what, even when we say hybrid, what does that mean? I can interpret hybrid, saying, we have groups of students who cannot learn online. We have to find a way to get them on campus. K through 2 can be a hybrid model, too. There's great arguments for that. So, tonight, for us to say, we've got the triggers for red, yellow, green, it just, to me, causes more questions than any answers. And not that I disrespect it. It has to be a part of our conversations. I will, as a board member, of course, respect it. But that's, that's just where I think our focus should be shifting instead, is the students' needs.
And as I see it, it is there, already there. This is like step one, right? Because you've got to determine that safety issue. This step, which I guess is the safe, simpler, scalable. And then, that is the discussion, because that's part of the discussion for the hybrid model. Who are the most in need? Who do we need to reach first, and which is the safest? You still have that safety umbrella up there. But you have to have these metrics first, because, well, unless you believe that even though, if we were in the far, far red, you still wanted to serve those really at-risk, at-needs students, which you could, and disregard that safety component. But that's, I'm seeing it as the safety component, as phase one, or the first step. And that we're not ignoring, and it will be a focus, especially in the next two weeks, as you are vetting out those hybrid models. Is that correct?
Yes.
Am I reading that correctly?
Yes.
So, I, I see that what you're concerned about is being incorporated.
That's good. Vice Pres, uh, Vice President.
Oh, I got a new title. I think, if, if I may, I think that probably, I think where I'm having that logjam is specifically between, is, has to do with supply and demand. Because, yes, we have a lot of parents who may say they would like to send their kids to school, whether it's red, green, they don't, they don't necessarily care. Or maybe there are some parents willing to send their students if we hit that yellow benchmark, or, or lower. The question for me is, do we have staff that meet that specific demand to do hybrid models, regard, whether it's red, whether it's yellow? I mean, that is my, my, I think, the, the issue, the dilemma I'm having with, because I do agree with Board Member Pearlberg's point, but I also recognize the fact that it, I, these students could show up tomorrow. We don't have the staff to teach them. So, I think maybe if we, I assume you guys will probably be surveying people to see, get, learn more now about the specific desires of staff and students, because, you know, it might be that we have plenty of staff and students who want to come in from the lower elementary levels. But then, we might have a cohort of high school students who really want to come back, and their parents want to come back, regardless of what the metrics are, or even if we hit yellow, but we have no teachers and no staff willing to meet that, or not enough. So, I think it's hard to create a hybrid model, or envision what that is, without actually knowing where individual people stand, and, and what their, what those specific needs are. I mean, I don't know how you, because we can create, we can do one of two things. We can either create a hybrid model in a, in a vacuum, where we say, this is what we're willing to, to put forward, and this is what we have enough staff to do. And that would still potentially leave out many, some or many people who want to return to school no matter what, right? Or, you are building a hybrid model to match the specific demand that you have, and you might not have the staff. Now, in. Now, logically, one would say that you have to, I mean, the most sensible thing is to develop the model, and then what you can do, you can do. But that, you know, I think that's probably the, I mean, I think this has always been the issue with the hybrid model, is how, I mean, how it's really accomplished because we just might not have that meeting of the minds or supply-demand to match what's needed. I don't know if you have any comments on that.
So, I think there are a couple of things on that front. So even with the EDL camps, in order to staff them, there are people who didn't want to come to work to staff them, but they didn't have a health reason not to come, and their option was to report for the assignment, or they could request a leave of absence, or they could resign. But, so for me, I think that's part of the challenge. We're not asking people to return to teach in the classroom when we're in the red. I think we have to be very clear, we're not going to do that. We've provided alternatives for our staff that have health concerns or have family health concerns. But if it's a matter of, I don't feel like I want to. We've had a staff member, I don't know who the person is at all, said, I don't feel comfortable coming back until there's a vaccine. We have to staff to provide the educational services. That's why we exist.
Right.
And so that's where I guess I'm tripping up a little bit. I think we have to develop what it looks like to provide that hybrid option for our kids based on prioritization of need in a way that allows us to not go backwards. That's kind of the goal, on our way to green. Because what I really want is to be able to go to all 28 campuses and be greeted by the principals at the door and visit classrooms with kids. That's what I really want, and I'll do that in a mask. But I just, that's ultimately the goal. And so whatever we can put in place to stand that up and make it happen and do it as quickly as possible, we want to make happen. But quickly doesn't mean compromising safety. That's why having the data metrics is important because it allows us to see what the parameters are to be able to make those moves.
But I think that's my, I think that's my point, though, is the demand-supply side because if you develop a hybrid model, let's say 65% of our, but it's only built to handle X number of students and X number of staff. That's my question. I mean, if we are in the yellow, but 80% of people want to do the hybrid model, and we only have staff to handle 50 in a hybrid model safely, like our vision is a safe model, that it doesn't rush things and make us go back. There is, there would be a percent of people, potentially. I have no idea. This is my point of why we would have to survey this and find out. It's not that staff don't, maybe staff don't want to show up, but on the other hand, maybe we just don't feel safe putting all those people in at this yellow time. How would we, that's just something to consider. We don't have to discuss that now because that's something for the committee to discuss. That's just where my thinking is. There's nothing, it's not that staff don't want to come. It just depends on if you're building a hybrid model that by definition means not full onsite learning. So we could have more people wanting to do that, although I guess maybe we would just, yeah, it really just depends.
Right.
Vice President Beckman.
We talked about the hybrid model a lot in the committee, and it centered more, unless it's changed, around certainly having it open for at-risk kids. But it was more of a, this is how we're going to start rolling out coming back to our campuses. And we even discussed, like, do we do an alpha split for, you know, for our schools? Do we start with K3? So it wasn't kind of like the old hybrid, or the discussion didn't center around the old hybrid, like everyone that wants hybrid, choose hybrid. And then we had like this unknown, all of a sudden, all these people that want a hybrid. It was more the district saying, this is how we're going to roll it out. This is how we're going to start. And so you would actually have more of a known number than, and plus those ones that were at risk. So it would be less kind of obscure.
Well, and that's, again, that's my point, that if that, to Barbara Pearlberg's point, let's say September 8th, we have had yellow for three weeks in a row, and below 7%, below 7% for three weeks in a row, we are true yellow. If the hybrid model is K3, and you have a bunch of people in middle school and a bunch of people in high school saying, wait, why can't I return now? That's my comment. It's either, you either set the hybrid. So what I want to make clear, I guess, is, is that because we don't know specifically what that hybrid model is, not only does reopening depend on these metrics, which are, I stand behind, but know that you might personally not be returning to a hybrid model just because you want to.
Right.
Because that's not how the district is rolling it in. It's not a, we're meeting demand with supply. It's, we are creating a hybrid model to roll out to phase in that might not include your student.
Correct.
Right, okay, that's.
And that is absolutely was my understanding. And that's part of the clarity needed for families. So they don't have this expectation like, okay, good, two weeks, you're going to school Monday, that it may be rolled out as the K3 first. It may be rolled out as an alpha split at high school, or, you know, however is determined by our district on what is the safest way, the easiest way. I mean, we had many conversations about, and it's out there in the community, so I'll just say this too, about is it safer to bring back some of the younger kids first? Do we start that way? And because, and do we go K3? Because if you're on a K5 campus, you can spread out the K3. I mean, there were a lot of conversations around that. And so I think the first step was, do we approve the metrics? The second step, well, and I want the metrics defined, so our community understands that. Then the second step is, if the metrics are approved, then we work on that hybrid model, and we let our community know how we're actually implementing that hybrid model and what our vision is for bringing that forward. Laying very down early that the expectation is, we haven't defined the hybrid exactly. We're just going to start bringing students back to our campuses at that point. And then we define it once the metrics are approved. So does that make more sense?
Yeah, I don't know if there are notes online from, I'm not on the committee, so I don't know. I don't know specifically what was discussed, but I just, I just wanted to understand, I just want to understand that piece, that we're developing, we will likely, potentially, I don't know. But it looks like we are developing a phase-in system where it's not about supply meeting demand.
Right.
It's about phasing in to be safe. So I just wanted to clarify.
A hybrid then was originally brought forth.
Right, okay.
And just to add to that, and this is, it's correct. When you look at the high school schedule right now, you've got, you know, the split on Mondays and Wednesdays where you're doing the first three hours, Tuesdays and Thursdays doing four, five, and hours, four, five, and six with synchronous instruction. You already have something in structure that you don't have to change the calendar at all. You want to talk about that?
I look like.
I have eyes up that side of my head.
There's an expert waiting in the weeds.
So I think there's a way to think about this that can be helpful, and since Dr. Garen is chairing the committee.
I made it till 9 o'clock before having.
Impressive.
Good evening, Governing Board President, Governing Board members. Dr. Menzel, Cabinet, thank you. So we have met a couple times already as a return-to-learn Phase 2. And I really want to give credit to our expectations committee, which was a subgroup of the committee in the return-to-learn plan. And that is where the clear expectations are coming from about synchronous and asynchronous instruction, what parents can expect on grading, attendance, so that consistency and shared understanding that you didn't see in quarter four, we have now. That expectation also, committee also helped develop the schedules. And what Dr. Menzel said was that we really have a sort of hybrid model right now because we're trying to manage synchronous and asynchronous time in front of the camera and support students. So for example, in high school, students attend period 1, 2, and 3 on Monday, 4, 5, and 6 on Tuesday. So really, if you thought of it, that's an AABB group because we could have half of the kids going to school Monday, Tuesday, and they would get all their classes, and the other half coming Wednesday, Thursday, they'd get their other half of classes. We would decide what would happen on Friday and the afternoon. So when Dr. Menzel said we want to keep it safe, simple, and scalable, there's already been so much disruption and change throughout the organization by taking our entire school district online, changing the platform. It's very difficult for students. We don't want to have another upheaval. We want to safely bring students back and keep them with the teachers they have and keep as much consistency in their lives as possible for our students, for our staff, for our families. So when you look at the schedules we have now, we're looking at how we can phase and safely bring people back. Middle school is somewhat similar, where they have three ELA synchronous lessons a week, three math synchronous lessons a week. So that is, in essence, a hybrid model, but all at home. So we would, could bring them back in person for those synchronous lessons, and they already have asynchronous learning at home. That would be that home time. Because a teacher, if she has, he or she has two groups, they can't be teaching them in person at home on the same time. So we have to really manage the workload and the expectations and what we're expecting of our staff. So we're really set up for success because of the work that was done this summer by return-to-learn and expectation committees. So I'm very hopeful. Does that help?
Yeah, it does, and I appreciate that. I, that was the gist of, I mean, that's one of the issues that I was just trying to understand. And again, it's very, without notes of the committee meetings, it's kind of difficult to understand what has been discussed and what has not. But I appreciate that all that has been done. And I mean, it is pretty similar to what schools in other states are doing from friends who I have, who have kids in school, doing kind of block learning, very university system-like, so. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Dr. Garen. Okay, now the big question, if everybody is. How to word this? Because the way that it was worded was very general in that, well, I guess not so general. Approval of metrics to determine when schools may resume in-person instruction. Are we, is that clear?
So.
Would you like to amend it?
Don't the guidelines say hybrid when you're in yellow? So if we're adopting, you know, red, not such a good idea. Yellow is hybrid and green is all systems go. So if we adopt the metrics, then we are adopting, at least the way I understand it, to a human person.
So we might want to say approval of the Maricopa County. It is Maricopa County Public Health guidelines?
Arizona Department.
So the committee recommended adopting Arizona Department of Health Services. There's only one change with Maricopa County, and that is, they needed the cases to be under 100 per 100,000, not just the two-week declining average. That's the shift. And I think from our data in the Scottsdale area, we're going to be under the 100 per 100,000. I think that's going to be solidly yellow. A while before, we're green, but we'll be yellow. I'm wondering, so just to capture this idea of, okay, what's the true data set? Because the county cautions against using what's framed as SUSD because it doesn't include all of our kids. We don't want to take Maricopa County as a whole because that means we're lumped in with parts of the county that might not reflect us. So on page four of the School Reopening Dashboard and Guidance for Maricopa County, it says, under the section called Selecting the View Area, the third bullet says, "A school that draws students from an area broader than district boundaries could use a set of regional zip codes to define their region and average the case rates between 100,000 population and test percent positivity." So if we use that, I don't know if you need it in the motion or not, but this, to me, seems to get at the question of, okay, what data are we using? If it's not Maricopa County and it's not click on SUSD, it's just regional zip codes, and I think we have those representing 92% of our student body. That would allow us then to be able to run that analysis. Is that reasonable?
That is for me. How about everybody else? I saw a nod over here.
Yep.
Okay. Sandy Barber?
I'm fine.
Okay. So how we would state it would be approval of metrics of the Arizona Department of Health Services. That's what we'd be approving tonight.
That's the recommendation, and then the specific.
But we were maybe not going to put that, even though that's, we know that's the intent.
As long as we know that, that's good.
It does, that very specific does not need to be in that approval. I guess we have it on record. All right, well, then, do I, do we have a motion to approve Action Item B, Approval of Metrics, as defined by the Arizona Department of Health Services?
So moved.
Board Member Greenberg moves. Do we have a second? Vice President Beckman, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries four to one. Thank you very much. Dr. Menzel? We'll move on to Action Item C, Approval of Proposed Priorities for Submission to Arizona School Boards Association for the 2021 Political Agenda. Board Member Greenberg is our representative for ASPA. Would you like to present this item?
Thank you, Board President Beckham. I'm conscious of the time, so I guess I would start by asking, do you want me to go through and provide a highlight of the agenda? Or have you all read it, and would we rather just move forward to any comments you might have for me when I attend the assembly? Or any changes you might have that you would like me to put forward?
All right. Has everybody read it? And does everybody understand the priorities that they would be approving by approving this tonight? And if not, maybe if you just want, were there four of them again? And maybe just read those four?
Yeah, the high-level ones were, one, adequately and equitably fund district schools to at least the national median per pupil funding. Arizona is the bottom four. Second, reserve and strengthen local control. Third, improve outcomes for all students. And fourth, require public accountability for taxpayer dollars spent on education. And there are, there are 17, eight, 10, I mean, there are, I think, about 30 subsections, 30 to 40 subsections under each of those.
And just for our public, this is something that we do every year. And so far, it's quite much smoother.
I don't know why.
So do we have any discussion? If not, we'll just move on to see if there's a motion.
I'll, oh, I just have one thing. And I don't, I've said it before. One of their issues is increase the compulsory attendance age from 16 to 18 years. We have some seniors that graduate and they're 17. I think it should be more that they are completing a course of study to earn a diploma rather than, you know, pegging it to an actual age. I mean, because there are children who are super geniuses, and they're graduating high school at age 12, if not younger, so.
That's a great point.
You know. But I've submitted that before, and it doesn't go anywhere, so.
But it doesn't mean that our representative can't submit it again.
I think it's a very good point.
I appreciate that, Board Member Kravitz. All right, well, how about if I just made a motion to approve Action Item C, the proposed priorities? Did you have a question?
No, I just commented, and I said this before. I'm going to just say it again. My vote reflects the issue that I have with the 30-plus laundry list of things, how this is done, and how, especially when they get down into these details and stuff, how divisive it becomes. So that's what my vote reflects.
Okay, thank you.
Not disagreement with many of the items.
Right, I'll say that, too, with regard to my vote as well.
Yeah, I will say that it's, I don't know how exactly you stay focused with such a large list, how they manage that. There is a fifth item I forgot to mention. They did put for this year a fifth item covering COVID. If any of you saw that, there are another 11 subsections, I believe, in that. I did not write them all down. But it is in the packet, and most of them are, I think, things that we would agree with anyways.
Well, just in fairness to ASPA, I think it was two years ago they changed it. They used to go in with the 30 when they sat down to advocate with their state legislators. The reason they went to the four, now five, was so that they weren't going in with that long laundry list, and they made it simpler for our legislators to understand what they were advocating for. were advocating for. So that is why it did become subsections.
Right.
And if one of those legislators is interested in a specific area, then they go into the subsection.
Right.
So I just, in fairness to ASPA, I wanted to add that.
Yeah, no, that's fair, that is a fair comment, thank you for that.
All right, do, so I've made the motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Board Member Greenberg, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Nay. I'm abstaining.
Abstaining, abstaining, so one, okay, so we have in favor three, opposed one, abstention one, so motion carries three to two. Thank you very much, Board Member. I hope you will enjoy the delegation assembly.
The virtual assembly.
Yes, and it is going to be virtual, and it's later this year. Okay, we'll move on to item number 10, Future Items for Consideration, Board Members May Propose Topics for Future Agenda Items. Do we have any? All right, now tonight, dates for upcoming meetings, Tuesday, September 1, 2020, 5:00 PM, Special Governing Board Meeting at the MDA. Tuesday, September 15, 2020, 5:00 PM, Regular Governing Board Meeting. Are we going to have it be announced, or are we pretty sure it'll be Coronado? We'll say Coronado, but be aware that at any point in time, it can change, and we will try to be on top of that. All right, we would like to adjourn the meeting, I move to adjourn this Regular Governing Board Meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
What about reports?
What?
What about governing board reports?
Oh, gosh, I forget board reports, I did.
Sorry.
Thank you, sorry, I didn't realize. Board reports, Board Member Grabbits.
I just wanted to remind people that I think Dr. Menzel mentioned our EDL, we have some capacity there, we said something about expanding to 240 students, the sites are on our website. I also wanted to remind students that we have drop-in centers for middle school and high schoolers at Suaro and Coronado. And I did want to thank, I noticed on our consent, while I, we should thank our APTs, PTA's, PTO's for their generosity throughout the year, I wanted to, I saw that the Scottsdale, the SUSD Foundation granted, gave a gift to Suaro for $50,000 for the Innovation Center there, so I did want to give a special shout-out to them, and thank you for that gift. Again, I, we do appreciate all the gifts that our district receives, and especially those from the APT, but I think that one just jumped out at me, so I wanted to acknowledge the SUSD Foundation, so thank you.
And thank you for doing that, Board Member Grabbits. Anybody else, board reports? All right, I'll go back to adjourning the meeting, I move to adjourn the meeting, do we have a second?
Second.
Board Member Greenberg, seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion passes five zero. This Regular Governing Board Meeting on August 18, 2020, is adjourned at, I think it's at 8:20? 8:20, now my phone's.
No, nine.
Nine twenty.
9:25.
Nine twenty, thank you.